It's the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, held November 3rd, 2015, at 6:00 PM at the Cottonwood Council Chambers Building. And as you will all notice, we've postponed building a City Hall that would accommodate our needs. So we put the 911 call center and other things we needed first, and who knows, it may be 20 years that we have this problem, but someday, we're hoping to be able to accommodate you all in our council chambers. As it is tonight, we're turning away people, and I feel bad about that. Okay, so we have Kaylee Gordon here to lead the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Would you like to take real call?
Councilmember Dowling, here. Councilmember Alinsky, here. Councilmember Howie, here. Councilmember Garrison, here. Vice Mayor Pfeiffer, here. Mayor Jones, here. And Councilmember Pratt is absent.
Okay, thank you. Pledge of Allegiance with Kaylee.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
And Kaylee, do you want to share a little bit of information about yourself and school and what you do and your accomplishments?
Well, I'm a member of the Youth Advisory Commission. I'm the senior class president at Mingus. I'm the co-captain of the volleyball team, and I just love hanging out in Cottonwood and being a part of the community.
Great, and so you're not a very busy person, I take it. Have a lot of free time, right? So on behalf of the council, we have this certificate for you. Usually, we do the brief summary of current events and all of those kinds of things, but I think I'm going to go ahead, if it's the pleasure of the council also, and call for our presentation regarding the Keep Sedona Beautiful Pursuit of the Sedona Verde Valley Red Rock National Monument, its presentations, and I asked the city manager to make these arrangements, and I think his assistant, I'd like to thank her for calling. As I understand it, it was a little bit hard to find someone from Keep Sedona Beautiful at that moment, that we were trying to put this meeting together. So Barbara did email me, Barbara Latrell emailed me last night and told me that this was, there were more groups, and this wasn't quite exactly what you thought it should be, but I think that it's okay, we can still get through it with this description, and I apologize, it wasn't perfect. We just couldn't find the right people at the right time, so. Okay, so we'll start out tonight, we have three presentations, as I understand it, one by Barbara Latrell, and one by Dwight Kedar, and one by Sandra Cosentino. Did I say that right? Cosentino, okay. And we had allotted 20 minutes per presentation, and that puts us at an hour, and I've attended two of the three-hour meetings up in Sedona, trying to learn, and I've shared information with our council, whatever was shared with me, so that we could all try to understand the issues. And so tonight is pros and cons, so we're going to talk about the good and maybe the not-so-good, according to your opinions, so that we can learn as to what we need to know. So if we would go ahead, and do you want to start, Barbara? And she has a PowerPoint presentation. Were we ready for that, Matt? She had let you know, yeah.
Jesse, do you have your light?
This one?
Yeah, so that.
Oh, she's like, she's talking about...
Okay, I was thinking she wanted a clicker.
Well, it would have been a clicker for the...
Okay, to make it advance.
Slides, I think.
And usually, those clickers have laser on them, too, a lot of times.
Sometimes, yes. Yes, we don't like that.
Mayor Jones, councilors, thank you so much for the opportunity this evening to present to you perspective on preservation and the opportunity for a national monument designation. I'm joined in the presentation by Matt Kapalbi. First, I'll introduce myself, I think I know most of you, having been here before you several times. I live in Sedona, and I've, I was city councillor for four and a half years, and I've been involved in conservation, preservation efforts of this area for probably the last 10 years. So let me just introduce, if I may, another member of the coalition, and that is Matt Kapalbi.
Thank you, Barbara. Mayor, councilmember, certainly a pleasure and honor to be here this evening. Many of you knew me, my previous role is the Regional Director for Northern Arizona, for the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. Certainly a pleasure to see you all again. But to give you a little bit more background, I'm a third-generation Northern Arizona resident. Also, prior to my career with the Department of Environmental Quality, I actually was an industrial and commercial real estate developer. And subsequently, working over in Mojave County at that time, I worked to bring in a steel plant, a natural gas-fired power plant, a private prison, a chemical gas plant, and a number of other businesses and trucking companies into that area. So by any stretch, I cannot be viewed as some, for lack of a better term, a tree-hugging liberal, for the most part. But I am very concerned for the well-being of our environment and especially our economy. My role as a developer, I was working for the Mojave County Economic Development Authority prior, again, working for the state. So we want to talk to you tonight about how important it is for your regional economy, for your watershed, and for your quality of life in this area, to make sure that we provide some sort of permanent protection for the red rock areas around this valley. They're key to our economy, to our well-being, and to me, first and foremost, our watershed. As we'll go on, too, you'll see the fact that the Verde River watershed is the most degraded in Arizona and in the top 10 most degraded watersheds in the United States. So we see the next slide? This is why we're here. This is why so many of us live in the Verde Valley, in the Sedona area, is these red rocks. We want to make sure that we can preserve and protect and always maintain access for economic purposes, as well as for recreational and quality of life purposes throughout this region. And it is key that we provide permanent protection for these areas, so they don't end up in private hands where access is cut off, so people are not able to, like pink-cheeked tourists, able to access those areas to pursue their livelihood as well. This is a public area, it's public use. Next slide, please. We're going to talk about the threats and the reasoning behind why a permanent designation is so important. Congressional land trades, you're going to hear from the opposition on how the Forest Service is sufficient to provide the necessary protections for our areas, for the red rock areas. Well, speaking from direct experience, that's naive, to believe that the Forest Service alone can provide the necessary protections to provide for the well-being and open areas of the red rocks. We have one immediate example that just occurred, and it's the Oak Flat example. These photos of the Oak Flat, that is in the Tonto National Forest, near Superior, is a designated recreational area with a well-developed campground and facilities. A few months ago, actually back in the spring, it was an amendment to a defense authorization bill with no input from the Tonto National Forest, to where it is now a designated copper mine. Resolution Copper, Rio Tinto, just acquired it, because underneath this land right here is the largest deposit of copper, consolidated deposit in the Western Hemisphere. They viewed it as more important, because they had good lobbyists, Rio Tinto, in Congress, they totally bypassed all local and regional authorities in order to provide for this land swap. Many of you know also the issues surrounding what we used to call the land trade handshake, which was the Ruskin land trade, that fortunately appears to be dying, even though it's kind of like a zombie, keeps coming back up every so often. So, next slide, please. Now, again, this is due to land swap. This is Bisbee. And if you go to Morantzi, Superior, Globe, Miami, those areas, this is what can happen, too. And this, to believe that that can't happen in this area, again, is naive. If you want to see tailings and strip, mine stripping, similar to what you see around Jerome, this can happen if there are not permanent protections provided for key areas in this valley. So that's something, again, to keep in mind. And with the American Lands Council and the Liberty Alliance, that's what they're advocating for. They want to see federal lands put into private hands. That's why they have the Koch Brother funding, corporate funding, national funding, from outside groups that are not local, or are concerned with the well-being of the people of the Verde Valley. This is Miami. As you can see, residents is right up against the tailing piles. Excellent. That's Miami, Arizona, by the way. These are recent bills representative by the Arizona Legislature, which are local legislators, Representative Thorpe, Representative Barton, Senator Allen, they are advocating for these types of actions. They want to see as many federal lands put into state lands, which then in turn can be sold, as much as possible. And if you see it, HP 2321 outlines it perfectly. State demands that the United States extinguish title to all public lands and transfer title to the state. Well, the state's purpose is actually to sell and generate revenue for our education system, which I approve of, I agree. But I do not agree in selling the red rocks and these key recreational areas for that Degraded watershed, the Verde watershed is in the top 10 most threatened and degraded watersheds in the United States. Mining and development is environmentally sensitive areas, can further diminish our water supply. If we don't have good headwaters and regional protections within the canyons, our water supply is going to continue to degrade. And again, I am speaking from direct experience. With the water quality issues that I had to address here in the Verde, which were very, very concerning, it wasn't just the water quantity that was degrading, it was the actual water quality. And you're going to hear a lot about water rights. Well, what's the purpose of a water right if there's no water to have rights to? So that's also something to key, to be aware of. So what I'd like to do now is turn it over to Barbara, so she can continue, and I'll be available for any questions.
Thanks, Matt. Thank you, Matt. Okay, looking at the coalition, and that was the reason, Mayor Jones, that I sent you a note, because KSB is a member of the coalition, but there are other individuals who are with other groups who are also part of the coalition, and represent the All-American Road Committee, Friends of the Forest, Sierra Club, the Verde Valley Cycling Coalition, Verde Valley Land Preservation, Friends of the Verde River Greenway, and a lot of interested members of the community. Over 4,500 people have signed the petition in favor of national monument designation. And so over the past year and a half or so, what has the coalition done? The coalition was working on research in order to find out what were the best ways to permanently protect the area. And so when they looked at the tools that were available, and of course, you may recall, national scenic designation was another tool to be considered, and we've talked about that a number of years ago, but national monument designation was determined to be the most effective way to permanently protect this land. And so once that was designated, and the process was determined, and they had researched all of this, they began to bring it to the public. And so they were, they've been holding monthly meetings where the public can join them for discussions on a weekly basis. We've been out, they've been out to the public at, to various community groups, local government agencies, as well as continuing to seek public input on the best solutions for this. So if someone has a better idea of a way to permanently protect this area, then the coalition is all ears to work with them and to determine the best way to do this. And we know that in this area, it's been a long history of conservation efforts. In the 80s, residents were trying to figure out a way to protect the red rock area. By 1998, when there was a, what we call sort of the tipping point land trade, the residents were really outraged and wanted to do something. We were very fortunate at that time to have Ken Anderson, who was the Red Rock Regional District Ranger, who agreed to work with the community on Amendment 12, which provided a restriction on permanent, on land trades. And Ken happened to be very progressive in his thinking, because I remember at the time that Amendment 12 was passed, another ranger from another district in this area said that he would not have worked for that kind of protection, because it does tie your hands to a certain degree. Because once Amendment 12 was done, they designated about 12 different areas. Each of those management areas required something special. But that's what's been protecting the area ever since 1998. And now the Forest Service has drafted a new plan, and those restrictive rules that actually had the force of law, they were prescriptive rules in Amendment 12, are, the language may be in the new forest plan, but the prescriptive rules that made it law to not do land trades is no longer there. So the protection is not as strong as it was under Amendment 12. And so we did have, we have had a 20-year quest for designation for that area. It lost in 2010 by 10 votes, and so here we are, 2015, and we continue to look at how, because now that we're out of the recession, I'm sure you see it in this area, we certainly see it in Sedona as well, building and development are starting again. We had some time to really sit back, and in some cases, that wasn't so good, but in other cases, it did give us an opportunity to breathe for a few years and figure out how we wanted our growth and development to be. And so when we look at the goal, it's permanent protection, and these are the values that are being protected. The watershed and the riparian habitat, preventing land trades and land transfers, especially those that happen behind closed doors in Congress, the way the Oak Flat went down. Protecting the Native American sites, the archaeology, the ecological zone, soil preservation, access to the scenic landscape, the quality of life, and of course, the large diversified recreational opportunities that we have in this area, which spreads across the entire Verde Valley. Even from five years ago, I see every community in the Verde Valley working more closely together now than ever on economic development and preservation of our area. And so when we say why a national monument designation, I spoke about the fact that the forest plan does not have authority over congressional action and land swaps anymore. It is not the rule of law. It is perhaps a desired condition, but it is not a rule of law that Amendment 12 had. The president has authority to do this. It's been challenged in the Supreme Court, and ever since Theodore Roosevelt first used it to designate the Grand Canyon as a national monument, the Antiquities Act has been a way to bypass a dysfunctional and divided Congress, where you have people who want to preserve, people who don't want to preserve, you have industrial and lobbying interests. And so it has fallen to the presidents to look at preservation. And 14 out of 16 of the last, or 14 of the last 16 presidents have all taken the Antiquities Act as a way to preserve the public lands, and that seems to be the most effective way to do it. And a grassroots effort can produce the request for such a designation. So while we do seek support from as many government agencies, as many organizations as possible, it is also possible for a grassroots effort to accomplish this task for the area. And when you look at it, the map may be familiar, it's similar to the Amendment 12 map, but it's been extended over to the V Bar V Ranch Sacred Mountain area, as well as, you know, a few other minor designations. But when an area is proclaimed, then all of the specific coordinates are put into it. And so as we look at the process, the process involves submitting the request to the White House Counsel on Environmental Quality. And they are the coordinating group that works with the Departments of Interior and the Department of Agriculture, and does all of the hearings on the topic. And assuming that they find that this is an acceptable request and something to be done, they do the proclamation. When the request is submitted, it also includes draft management resource plan recommendations. And there are 31 of those that have been prepared, that would be submitted with the request, and we'll see more about those in a moment. And once the proclamation is done, then there is a three-year community Forest Service collaboration to produce the management resource plan for the area. Very much like Amendment 12 took two years for the community and the Forest Service to work out all the management areas and how they were going to actually do it. The same thing would happen here in a national monument. And there, as I mentioned, there are 31 recommendations, I'm not going to go through them, I hope someone has sent you a copy of those, and if not, I will, but the heart of them include no land trades or sale, expressly permitted recreational uses, they are listed, environmental protections, and the protection of valid existing rights, including water rights, utility rights, transportation, and grazing.
And to speak to that point, too, that is what, those points right there, the 31 recommendations, that's what we're advocating for. And I want to assure the opposition to this as well, that, I'm sorry, that if the White House does not abide by our recommendations, we'll join the opposition. We will be opposed in a national monument if it does not reflect what the wants and needs are of the local people.
And when we talk about the economic impact of national monument designation, you will hear that jobs are lost, and economies go down, and cities go out of business, but the research points out, that economic studies point out, that protected lands are economic engines for the surrounding communities of that national monument area, and even for the states that they're located in. For example, in Garfield County, which is near the Grand Staircase Escalante, labor in real terms, personal income from labor in real terms grew by 14% in the four years prior to the Grand Staircase establishment, grew by 18% in the four following years. Unemployment fell from 12.4% in 1995 to 9.2% in 2001. And at the same time, Kane County, where personal income in real terms grew 27% in four years prior to the monument's creation, saw a growth of 33% in the four years after that. And unemployment dropped from 8.7% to 3.5%. So I think we have to take a look at this in context. Conservation is hard work. As I did research on this, I found that every time there was some kind of a designation for an area to give it permanent protection, there was a huge clash of forces. And whether it is the mining, the grazing, you know, timber, timber and various other forces are, and development are always opposed to conservation. And so this has happened going back to the Grand Canyon, where, you know, Stephen Mather was blocked by the state senator Ralph Henry Cameron, who was also a prospector and hotel owner, who considered the Grand Canyon his own private domain. And it was a battle for years. And finally, Theodore Roosevelt, you know, designated the Grand Canyon, and of course, today we are the Grand Canyon State. And so we know that conservation is hard. We don't expect there not to be opposition. And we've been in a lot of presentations, and the opposition has presented their point of view, and I'd like to present the coalition's point of view, because if they are saying that it's a federal land grab, I think we have to really look at it as the land is already federal. This only affects the National, the Forest Service lands, does not affect private property or state lands. And in this case, the state of Arizona is the one that is planning the federal land grab. We hear that there would be no control over the text of the proclamation once you submitted, and yet if you look at all of the, and I've looked at the various proclamations for other areas, including Aguafria here in Arizona, and what they put in is what they got back. Those management recommendations are honored when they are preparing the proclamation, and then when you do the two or three years of collaboration. The complaint that cities will be in holdings, well, you know what? We already are, because we are surrounded by national forest, and a national monument only affects national forest lands. That there would be restricted grazing, one of the management recommendations protects those rights. You know, things like shooting and target practice are not allowed. Well, if the Forest Service allows them now, they would be allowed then. Restricted camping, restricted horse riding, those are protected. I just have a couple of more, I believe.
And, you know, because we do have more speakers through the opposition, go ahead and take a couple more minutes.
I know, but you have two presentations there.
Yeah.
I'll just take another two minutes, if I may.
So two minutes, thank you.
You know, when you look at it, tourists, traffic vandalism, restriction of property rights, lost business, revenue and jobs, this is not the case. There is evidence to the contrary. Likewise, with restricted water rights, limited access, the fact that Grand Staircase Escalante economy declined, the evidence is to the contrary. Keep it going. And so in summary, I guess we just have to take a look at it for ourselves. You have to take a look at it for yourselves, because the question is, do we all agree that permanent protection is important? Will you go and do some individual research, not just what we say, not just what you hear from the opposition, but are you willing to look at research on your own to find out what opinion you come to on this? And then are we courageous enough and visionary enough to take the steps that are needed? Are we willing to do that research? And you know, just quoting Theodore Roosevelt, that "The nation behaves well if it treats the natural resources as assets which it must turn over to the next generation, increased and not impaired in value." Very much appreciate your time, I don't know if you want to do questions now or later.
We'll go ahead and, let's do them all at the same time. How about that, so that we'll...
Thank you, again, very much for having us.
Thank you.
Okay, so can, you'll stay till we have questions?
We're not married to anything. What you're really doing is bringing out soliciting input. And Cottonwood being really the big dog in Verde Valley, we really would like to have your input and thoughts as to what the best way is to manage... What you're really doing is bringing out soliciting input. And Cottonwood being really the big dog in Verde Valley, we really would like to have our input and thoughts as to what the best way is to manifest that permanent protection. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. Okay, so, next we have, who wants to go first? Dwight Kadar? Okay. And I would say that we also have Mr. Rossetes here tonight, and he has submitted a letter. And I would like us to hear from him also, because he did have a presentation at the other meetings that was the same length as everyone else. But because this was already going to take an hour, I, you know, we kind of trimmed it down a little bit, because we could spend three hours also. And the three hours was very informative, but I would like to give him a chance to talk about his position on cattle grazing.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman. I'm Dwight Kadar. I'm one of the four members of Sedona, excuse me, Arizona Liberty. And we would like to give you an in-depth look, from our perspective, of the monument designation. I think, first of all, we want to clear up something. We are not financed by the Koch Brothers. We do not have any external money. This is a self-financed grassroots organization of local residents. And there they are, I'm Dwight Kadar. That's Rick Norman outside. Unfortunately, is our third lady, which is Susan Ammon. And our fourth person was Mike Schrader is on vacation. It is the four of us, plus a number of other people, who have supported the effort. Talking about meetings, these are the series of meetings we've had with the Verde Valley to try to give a full perspective, a transparent perspective of what it means to be a national monument. There are a total of ten meetings. Started off with another group, one more, sweetie. There you go. United Citizens, and then the Arizona Liberty Meetings, the Sedona Verde Valley Realtors had a very large meeting in Sedona. But you can see, we've been reaching out to the community to make sure they understand what this means, because things will change. Next, please. We talked, they briefly talked about the Antiquities Act. This is a hundred and ten-year-old law that allows the designation of a national monument either through executive order by the President or through legislation by Congress. It has been done both ways. It can be done with little or no input from the citizens or the state, and is used to protect artifacts and historic sites. And finally, and this is a key point, it must be confined to the smallest areas necessary. This is in actually, the page, Section Two of the Act, and I would direct your attention to, it refers to specifically to national monuments, the smallest area compatible with the objects to be protected. It then goes on to say, "The objects held in private ownership may be relinquished to the government." This is the key. We're talking about a hundred and sixty thousand acres, and yet, we have not seen an inventory of the artifacts to be protected. Next. The legal implications, and this is very important. The federal government's ability to reach beyond the confines of the public land and regulate the activities. It's known as the inholders' rule. Why is it? Because all of a sudden, we become an inholder. There is not a national monument in the entire United States, there are a hundred and seventeen of them, that actually encompass a national monument, not a national forest, but a national monument, actually encompass a city like Sedona, or an unincorporated municipality like the Village of Oak Creek. It's also important, because it's, that's called the inholders' rule, it's also important to you people here in Cottonwood, as in Camp Verde, and others that are contiguous to this. And that is where we're talking about extraterritorial applications. And we'll talk about this a little bit further. The idea that there's what we call Monument Creek, it starts out this big and continues to grow. And we'll see a map in a little while. Finally, the property clause, which can be proven by case law, can apply at all governments. It's never been exercised in regards to a national forest, which is what we have today. But as you recall, they are going to be using the proclamation under the Antiquities Act, which defines a national monument, very different. The national forest is not subject to the antiquities clause, to the property clause as outlined in the Antiquities Act. Again, the national forest, it's very specific. As Ron Volkman says, my lawyer, words matter. Next, please. The unintended consequences, as we've looked at them, you become a national monument, somebody Googles, somebody Googles the Grand Canyon, and they find, here we are in Sedona. More visitors, more traffic, more vandalism, and more cost. Restrictions, we found that there are restrictions, and Andy Rossetti can talk more about restrictions, but there are these preliminary values, they're not final, remember, they're preliminary. There are restrictions. And grazing, we have found where ranchers have actually gone out of business, because they can't, they can no longer access their land through the monuments. Finally, and again, I will hammer this point to you all night, no city or unincorporated municipality has ever been totally encased inside a national monument. And that is the term of inholder. We'll go on, and we'll talk, in general, things on restricted water rights. They talk about grandfathering these things. This is preliminary, it's out of our hands once it goes to Washington, D.C. Next. Again, property rights, both inside the monument and where you are, close to the monument. Degraded quality of life, loss of business, and again, these are unintended consequences as we have looked at various monuments in the more recent, in the more recent past. Utility company access, the, one thing we found very interesting, and Ron was the one that found it, in June, he called APS and UES and the Governor's Office and the Attorney General's Office, none of them knew this was going on, had not been contacted at all by the Coalition. Finally, loss of revenues. And then ultimately, the question of property clause, and what you will find is the federal government has unlimited power on private property through the property clause of the U.S. Constitution. National parks and national monuments. A national monument automatically gets a higher Department of Homeland Security designation for terrorism. The question we continually ask ourselves is, what is the enforce, who is the ultimate enforcement in Sedona, or in the Verde, or in the Verde Valley, or in the village? Is it the Yavapai County Sheriff, the Coconino County Sheriff, or is it Department of Homeland Security? We don't know the question, because it's never, this has never been done before. And again, that term inholder. And the rules are different, and this is really, the rules in the Forest, the Forest Service actually balance the needs of the forest and the people. The monument rules are clearly much more restrictive, and I think it's pretty fair to say, more government regulation gives us less personal freedom. These are the levels of restriction, from least restrictive to most. You can see, we have a national forest, then the national monument, scenic area, national park, and then, of course, and we'll show you a picture in a bit, there are three wilderness areas that are already protected, that are included within the proposal. This is an interesting picture. This is the Colorado National Monument, and what I'd like you to look at, no biking, no dog walking. And as a local, you have to pay to get in there. These are the kind of unintended consequences that can happen. It's out of our control once it goes to Washington. We keep hearing this, "Oh, we've looked at them, we've looked, nothing will change." That was the mantra back in July, "Nothing will change." Well, that's not true. Again, here are, here are some examples of little or no public input. What I want you to look at, these are very recent monument designations, look at the size of the acreage. Remember that smallest area possible? The last one, one point nine million acres. This is not partisan, mind you. Most Presidents abuse the Antiquities Act for their own purposes, typically in the final years of their term. The Grand Staircase Escalante is an interesting case study. We've looked at it, they've looked at it, we've come to very different conclusions. It was established under the Antiquities Act, designated by Bill Clinton. The interesting point about this was, it was an area that they were having pushback from the locals and Bruce Babbitt. The former governor of Arizona found this Antiquities Act, and went to Clinton and said, "Here's a way we can get around the people." And they did it. The interesting part is, the governor got twenty-four hours advance notice that this was happening, didn't even know it. And in fact, Clinton signed this proclamation in Arizona, not even in Utah. Again, one point nine million acres, not the smallest area possible. Here's a series of, again, unintended consequences. This staircase has been, Escalante's staircase, has been, has been a monument for almost twenty years. And these are the kind of things, including loss of grazing rights and local quality. The one that we looked at shuttered businesses. Yeah, they talk about these great things, but if you listen closely, they were talking about the economy back in two thousand and one. We're now in two thousand and fifteen. Next, please. The process is broken after years of abuse. The Antiquities Act gives the President the unilateral authority, we don't get a vote. The eighty thousand citizens that live inside this monument area don't get a vote. There's something fundamentally wrong. And this is the key. This Resource Management Plan, those thirty-one points they talked about, it's submitted with proclamation, but it is subject to change after the proclamation is signed. They like to call it, the same thing we do, it's the Washington, D.C. black box. It goes in there, and what comes out, who knows? The key is, the changes are based on something called the National Environmental Policy Act. Not protection, but policy act, which is a serious study, it's called NEPA for short, and other required studies that take anywhere between three and five years. We were told at one of the meetings back earlier this year, that we wouldn't know all the rules until two thousand and nineteen. And it's hard to see, but the question is, how can KSB and the Coalition even develop plan if they don't know what the rules are? This is why, when we ask, "How are you going to guarantee these things, like water rights and grazing rights?" You can't, because you don't have control. This is the map you just saw, I think it's important to see. There's Sedona, here's the Village of Oak Creek, here's Cottonwood. It wouldn't take a lot for this Monument Creek to come out and be, and include Cottonwood next, or Camp Verde. The proposed monument also includes eighty thousand acres of the wilderness area, which is already the highest protection available. Next. And again, here are the wilderness areas that surround Sedona, you can see Dale Page Springs. This has got, again, this is the, this has got the highest protection available by our federal government. Next. The monument designation, we believe it's a solution for a problem that we don't have. We've got an excellent relationship with the Forest Service and the Red Rock Ranger District. The local archaeologist cataloging and researching is going on. There are many volunteers that are assisting in trail maintenance. There, it is a great working relationship between the Forest Service and the local community. They're, and when, if we could define what these antiquity sites were, if we could get a list of them, they could be added to existing ones, including Tuzagut and Monazuma's Castle, without encompassing a hundred, additional hundred and sixty thousand acres. Next, please. So, under the designation, it's created by the President of Congress, it does disenfranchise state and local stakeholders, does not value any local input from us, ignores the state and, both state officials and agencies' input, undermines prior deliberation, undermines public support. This is the key. The future mandated NEPA and Section Seven analysis, as Mike Schrader would say, that Section Seven analysis is like having the IRS audit you. Those are the kind of rules that we would have to be under as a national monument. Our Coconino National Forest is already a model of a well-managed area. The future? What gives us, or the Coalition, the right to take the freedom that we enjoy today from the future residents and the generations of this land that we call home? We need to balance the land, the people, the state, for all these years, and not let the bureaucrats in Washington lock this up on us. We must not be an experiment. Barbara was kind enough to call this an experiment in, at the Yavapai County Sheriff's Department. Personally, I don't want to be an experiment. I don't want to be inside a national monument as a private, as a private property rights owner. The Verde Valley is extremely innovative and unique in its structure and how we interact with the environment and in cooperation with the state and federal. It's time for us to improve on what we do. Are we perfect at this? No, absolutely not. But we're pretty darn good at it. And Saunders is going to talk about some things where we can prove it even more. There is no support, folks. The Realtor, slow down, sweetie. The Realtor Board voted ten-zero to oppose it. I put dates on there, the Big Park Council sixteen to six to rescind, and early endorsement, the Sedona City Council six to one to oppose, Red Rock News Poll seven to one to oppose, Verde Independent Poll four one to oppose, Yavapai County Supervisors, we had a meeting with, will not support, the Outfitter Guides will not support, the Sedona Chamber of Commerce is remaining neutral, as you might imagine, as are the Verde Valley Archaeological Center, they will not take positions. And then finally, we started a petition drive of our own, two months after they did. Seventy-five percent of the people that signed our petition for no monument were local, here in the Verde Valley. Okay? Twenty-five percent were tourists. Our friends on the other side were getting, were out in Tulakapaki getting the tourists and waiving this petition. About sixty percent of their signatures for this monument are people that don't live in the Verde Valley. There's a problem there, folks. Continuing, no support. This was posted, it's on Sedona Biz. Ann Kirkpatrick, who is the representative in CD One, she will not be going forward with a Sedona Verde Valley National Monument. We independently checked this. Currently, the Congresswoman has no plans to push the national monument designation forward. She also expressed that she was aware of the diversity and controversy that this has created. It has been extremely divisive in the city of Sedona. And then finally, Ann Kirkpatrick is a hot potato, and she is no longer on board. Next, please. Arizona Game and Fish, and I've given you a copy, two thousand and twelve, they have opposed any national monument designation because it makes their job almost impossible. And they've got a set of assignments and rules to protect the game and fish in the state. Next. The question we've got to ask is, with the overwhelming opposition to the national monument, why are keeps Sedona beautiful? The Monument Work Group, the Coalition, and the Sierra Club, because we know they're involved, continuing their efforts? You owe the citizens of Verde Valley an answer. Next, the closing statement. Unfortunately, I did not know that you weren't going to take a vote on this, but, shoot, back up, please. But should you take a vote, we think it's appropriate for you to oppose any national monument designation. And finally, today, we got word that Paul Gosar, your Congressional District Four Representative, will in fact introduce legislation on Thursday, November the sixth, to reform the Antiquities Act and stop the continuing abuses. This legislation will update the nineteen oh six Antiquities Act to ensure local community interest. The fact that we need to have a voice, and we don't under the Antiquities Act, it is done without the voice of the people. And with that, Arizona Liberty and our supporters would like to thank you, the Council, for an opportunity to share our research and vision for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Constantino?
you today. My name is Sandra Constantino. I'm a twenty-five-year resident of the Northern Verde Valley. I actually live just outside, right now, the Cottonwood City limits. I'm also a third-generation Arizonan, conservationist. I have prior experience in land planning. But most of all, I just love this land, just like the people in KSB do. I have a different view of what we need to do to protect... I have a different view of what we need to do to protect the land. And that's, thank you for the opportunity to share that. Next one. What I ask people in the Cottonwood-Clauston area, what is your vision? There's a chance with the monument that Cottonwood could become more like to say on, where you're a border to the park, a tourist support facility, and maybe some people might welcome that, but with that's going to come changes. It's something to think about. And that all the dispersed use that's going on in the land just to the north of Cottonwood, that's going to change with the monument. And I'm going to just go on. So the multiple use is part of the equation to think about. Do you want more restrictive level of management that's going to change the uses? And so, I call these the perceived threats, that these are the key things that KSB has been addressing with this proposal, which we've had very limited time to research and respond to in just the last few weeks, when they made public what they'd been planning behind the scenes. And we know from the prior legislative attempts, the fear of land exchange and development is really the key thing. They've added, with this process, fear of mining, oil and gas development, there'd be utility development going on, commercial leasing. And then they, at least the last iteration of the guidelines, they said there'd be no new leases. So it sounded like, at least the interpretation I heard from Birgit on their team, was that means that if, once the grazing leases expired, they wouldn't be renewed. So, I just want to, I'm going to address the land exchange and the recreation next. But as far as mining, there's not even mineral potential in the Sedona area. It's not an actual threat. And oil and gas, the strata that would contain oil and gas and uranium, like you have farther north on the Colorado Plateau, eroded away millions of years ago here. It's not a real threat. And what I want to show you is that we are, next one, in a well-managed recreation area. And this is what I believe KSB is undervaluing. And I was pleased to hear Barbara say, it was a landmark plan, the 1997-98 Amendment 12. It was the first time the Forest Service brought in an interdisciplinary team and really did a serious look. And this plan carefully balances the scenic qualities, the habitat, and a whole range of recreational experiences, and it provides a very sensitive interface with the private lands. And this is one of the things many of us are afraid we're going to lose with the more restrictive monument designations, because once it's a monument, KSB and the rest of us do not have control over all the rules they're going to make to be consistent with the monument values. There's no way you can say things aren't going to change. Everything will be reevaluated, and the plan that we worked as a community so hard, this agreed upon balancing of uses could be thrown out the window. And these plans are fully, next one, brought into the new Coconino Plan. And both Amendment 12 and the new plan recognizes the national, international importance of the Sedona Oak Creek ecosystem. It is woven throughout the plan, the framework for this. And they brought in, next one, all the protections that were Amendment 12, and it's in a new, modern, ecologically-based, updated planning process. And I'm glad that Barbara didn't talk about the aspirational-only thing about the management plan that Tomahalerin and others have been citing for years. These are old talking points from the Bush era, that planning is just aspirational, without binding commitments. Those planning rules were thrown out by the Supreme Court, and the modern planning rule, whose regulations were just passed, next one, in 2015, supports a whole new, modern process. And underneath the desired conditions, which are the broad ecosystem-based goals, that's only the first step. They don't speak to the standards. They call them standards, they don't call them prescriptive guidelines, like Barbara was referring to. No campfires, no creek canyon outside of designated areas. That's pretty prescriptive. And they have prescription on no land exchanges. It's very, very limited, what they can do with land exchanges. So the languaging for protection is in the new Coconino Plan. KSB doesn't like it, because the plan did not recommend legislative designation as a conservation unit for any part of the Sedona management area, because there was already adequate protections in place, and they hadn't done a detailed analysis of what the boundary would be. That could be a next step. So just a quick run-through, since the plan was passed, there's been incredible conversion of this Red Cliff high-use, public-use area into a managed recreation district. Oak Creek Canyon, they call it a recreation area. All the Red Cliff high visitor use accessible areas are also, next one, highly managed. They sold, this is all part of the plan, when they started doing Amendment 12, they sold the old ranger station on Brewer Road to pay for their new visitor center. And notice the scenic byway sign. The Red Rock Ranger District created the scenic byway, and they have signs for it, and they manage it as a scenic byway. That's the introduction to the Red Rock Recreation District. And there's a National Park Service Visitor Center there now to receive visitors, tell them the rules of the forest. Next. They created a process to manage Outfitter Guides. It's now a national standard on the Forest Service. They reduced the random access that was going on all along Highway 179, if any of you remember that, the old days. You could just pull off anywhere there. It was kind of a traffic nightmare, too. They re-engineered the trail system. Next. And example, Boynton Canyon. This is, they only have 30 parking spaces, and this is the second most popular trailhead in Sedona. They're purposely managing it to not overwhelm the canyon. And even, it's a tow-away zone now. If you park on that, access to Enchantment. And, next. And this is sensitive management of a residential area, trailhead, the Soldiers Pass area. Very, very limited parking. And now they're reevaluating this. I wouldn't be surprised if they limit the Jeep use up there, because that's a hot issue in that neighborhood. We have a very responsive ranger district, and there's ongoing participation with the user groups. It has not stopped since that plan was brought into place in 1998. They created the Red Rock Pass Program last year. It brought in $780,000. And 95% of that money stays there, and that's what helps them clean up after the tourists, and to do monitoring. They even allowed for the quiet use of the forest. This was something very unique to the Sedona Ranger District. 25% of the visitors, it was documented in a chamber study, come here for personal connection out on the forest land. It's a very, very unusual ranger district. Next. But they've also provided for motorized use. There's a corridor between the wilderness area, all of the savanna region, next, is motorized. And they have incredible stewardship partnerships with dozens and dozens of groups. And they have the authority to limit and manage visitor and commercial permitted uses. The key issue is funding. They do need, they need more staff. They need more maintenance money. That's true. That's a real issue. It's also true that new national monuments have not been receiving staff and maintenance fundings, and the KSB goal for this is aspirational-only, to use their word. Next. So, just a few of my concerns with their guidelines. As a former project plant manager with the state of Alaska, I just, when I read their guidelines, I could see some of them were overly prescriptive, some of them were overly broad, and either way, they're going to create a lot of problems for the land manager. This process should be managed by our land manager, in my opinion. So if you're basing it on antiquities, there are 2,500 sites in the Verde Valley. There's amazing sites just outside of Cornvale and outside of Camp Verde, and all over the valley. So ultimately, the whole valley is going to be a national monument to protect the antiquities. I know the Verde Valley Archaeology Center has a new program, a site watch program, which they believe is going to do more to protect sites than making it a national monument. But here's the key thing. They're saying, oh, it's going to continue to be managed by the Forest Service, who's going to incorporate the existing management plan in the new one, where compatible with management proclamation and guidelines. There's that black box. We don't know exactly what that's going to be. We don't know what's coming out of that planning process. And in regard to the public recreation and commercial tour activities, this new process to create is going to be created, that's going to evaluate all these activities for compatibility, and it sets the stage to totally change everything. As far as the land exchange, it's always been the biggest issue with KSB. And that pioneer era ended with the passage of this plan. They remove Sedona from the base for exchange with very limited exceptions. And to amend this, to allow a land exchange to a private developer, it takes a detailed NEPA analysis and public involvement. It's not a simple administrative process, especially since woven throughout the plan is emphasis on maintaining lands in public ownership due to the high scenic recreational and economic value to the public. That is so part of it. And also, next, that pioneer era of consolidation of the Yellow's Original Homestead, right in the Cor-Sedona area, these other colors were added, and it really was already pretty much at an end, even when the plan was coming into place, because the Forest Service was trading those lands to help consolidate around the Homestead sites, so that Sedona wouldn't have a town. And so same in VOC, same in Red Rock Loop. They did some land trades that consolidated the private ownership, and then on the other side, the Forest Service got valuable land that's now in public ownership. And now they, next one, they don't need more, there's only 95 acres that they're trying to obtain. These sites right here, because they've already purchased all the valuable sites they wanted to get, and actually, KSB helped them acquire those acquisitions from 1999 to 2004. The government paid $17 million for those 438 acres. It's very high valuable, high-value land. Those trades are automatically closed to mineral entry. Next. And so the Forest Service only has very limited authority, and I'm glad to see that the arbitrary guideline they had in their last few iterations, that they did modify it to at least allow that VOC or Sedona could get a fire station site or other needed public site. That wasn't even in the first, their guidelines, and I was glad to see they changed that. But it's still not up to them to be making rules for all of us. This is not a public process. We don't have, we have very, very limited say in what they do. And so, again, the concern with the amount of private land and how this boundary comes right down here, this is Page Springs area, 10-square-mile block of state land, and so what goes on in this monument could affect how these lands are developed, and what happens with the private properties, other private properties in there. And so, yes, parks and monument, I agree with Barbara. These are a form of tourism development, likely is going to bring higher visitation. My group, by the way, I'm an independent researcher, is part of the United Citizens, opposed to the Red Rock Monument, and we're a group of small business owners and recreationalists. We aren't partisan. We love Sedona, and we don't want to see everything change under this new management. I forgot to mention that. And, so these are some of the effects that we think is going to happen. And the property clause that Dwight referred to is real, that to protect monument values, they can affect what goes on in transportation corridors adjacent and private properties to protect monument values. And there's also an implied reservation of water rights to protect the monument, the waters within the monuments. Next. So, KSB, this is some of my, from my background, I'm appalled that somebody who's not the land manager is taking this role on themselves. They're presenting their preferred solutions without discussion of effects or alternatives. The process is unclear, and they're not recognizing the diverse qualities within the planning unit. So I went to one of their meetings early on, after they sprang their surprise on us in Sedona and Cottonwood with their public meetings in July, and I asked Tomahalerin about where they got, who were they consulting for the resource values? How did they determine the boundaries? He couldn't answer anything. They just took the boundaries of Amendment 12, the whole planning area that has all these diverse qualities, and just said, well, we're going to make that a monument. Next. And so, looking at an alternative way to address this, this is just an initial idea, but I have discussed this possibility with somebody in Forest Service Planning, that keep the current status unless there's site-specific analysis and a public process done for certain high-value sites and areas. And you would focus the attention on the famous Red Cliff area, but not turn the whole area into this sense of being a park. I know you can say a monument's not a park, but it's like one step away from it, and everybody knows a national monument has that park feeling. Is that it? Okay. So, here's the 80,000 acres, the pink of the wilderness areas. Next door is about another 55,000 in Sycamore Canyon Wilderness, that's managed by Prescott Forest. But, so that's already protected. This is the Red Cliff area. I colored in the management units according to the management plan, and these are the high-value, high-public-use areas. Next. That, that's only 20,000 acres, that's not 160 acres, that are getting all the public use. And you could work with the Forest Service to identify a scenic management unit, and the Forest Service has the authority to manage that in a more detailed way. They already are doing it, and I'll show you some other examples of that. And it could possibly be evaluated for nomination as a national scenic area. If that happened, at least there'd be justification for the boundary and the values, which there isn't now. Next. The neighbor woods, this white, is 15,000 acres of private lands, I mean, forest land supporting, surrounding the city of Sedona and VOC and Red Rock Loop. And so this is being very sensitively managed to protect the landowners and to keep the neighborhood quality. The next area I wanted to talk about is this big savanna area. It's 39,000 acres. Right now, they're aren't developed, with one exception, Deer Pass, there's no developed trails or trailheads or campgrounds to attract visitors. And they're really emphasizing dispersed use and keeping, and improving the antelope and the bird habitat, and manage it for a natural, uncrowded environment. It's a gem of an area. And I know KSB, I asked Tom and other people in KSB, why are you including that in the monument? And I think the main reason is they think that everything that's not in a federal conservation unit is going to get traded, and that's just not happening with, in the Coconino Forest and specifically the Sedona Management Unit. They recognize the public value. They aren't doing land trades. It's an onerous process. It takes a lot of staff time. The proponent has to pay all the costs. It takes years. And they're really not even doing them now. Next.
And so, you want to wrap it up quick?
Yeah. So, next. So, they already have created archaeological site protections like Homaki-Pilaki and V-Bar-V. V-Bar-V. They can, they can, go ahead, the next one, and they can, we can work with them to help with fundraising, we can work with them to create even citizen volunteer patrol program like's already happening at Oak Creek Canyon. There's a lot of ways we can work with them, including looking at an amendment to further address the key recreation use areas without turning the whole northern Verde Valley into this park system that's going to greatly affect our economy and our private lands. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your presentation. And Mr. Grossetta, do you want to come up and give us the quick version of your presentation? Cattle ranching has been the backbone of the Verde Valley and Cottonwood for several gen, many generations, and we would be amiss if we didn't hear this part of the presentation also.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Andy Grossetta, 625 South Main, Mountain English Road here in Cottonwood. I've been asked to make presentations regarding the impact of the oldest monument to the ranching community. I've made several presentations, Mayor's set in, I think, on a couple of them. I'll keep my comments very short. I've already submitted a letter to the council members. I just want to just maybe touch and highlight a few things, add a couple of things. One-
Mr. Grossetta, can you pull the mic around to, there you go. Thank you very much.
Sorry. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
In reference to the ranching community, the impact of the ranching community, the boundaries of this new national monument, the 160,000 acres, it would impact six ranches, working ranches here in the Verde Valley, both down in the valley and up on top of the rim. And when we talk about ranching and national monuments, they are just not good for people who are users of the land, the natural resource users. In national monuments, ranchers cannot use mechanized equipment or vehicles to maintain their improvements. If you have a dirt tank or an earthen tank, I think all of us know what those are, but over a period of time, when we have a lot of surface runoff, snow and rain, those tanks over a period of time fill up with silt, they need to be cleaned. And the only way you can clean them today is with a big rubber tire loader or with a cat. Mechanized equipment are off limits. If a ranch wants to build more fences, interior pasture fences, if they want to make their pastures smaller so they have better control of their livestock, on their livestock moves, that's next, impossible. Now, a rancher on federal lands has to work with the agency and conduct a NEPA. That's the National Environmental Policy Act. Anytime there's a major federal action, and I would suspect that when you impact 160,000 acres of landscape anywhere in the West of federal lands is a major federal action, if you ask me, and I've talked to several folks, that should require a NEPA upfront, not after the monument's been designated. If you want to do any kind of improvements on national forest lands, whether it's on the Prescott-Coconino, doesn't make a difference, or on Bureau of Land Management lands, a NEPA must be completed first. For a simple thing, it's just drilling another well to provide water for livestock and wildlife. We can't do that, even if we want to pay for it, until the NEPA's completed. So a way to get people involved, you hear a lot of discussion, well, we can't vote on it here locally, what can we do? Really, for this process to be done right, NEPA should be done ahead of time, and that's where the agency, in this case it'd be the Coconino National Forest, working together with the Prescott National Forest, would create an interdisciplinary team, they call them ID teams. And on those teams, they have experts who are resource managers, the members of those teams, but just as important, they have people from government municipalities, all cities and towns, the counties involved, Coconino, Yavapai, the agricultural conservation districts. They would all have a seat at the table, and they would vent the process. They would have a public spoken, scoping session, they would have many public hearings to gather input, and then they would come up with a list of alternatives. And then based on all of the input, all of the information they've collected, based on the information that the agencies have, they would make a recommendation. And that's the way this should happen. I can only point to you from experience what has happened to the big national monument that's been referred to several times here in southern Utah, the Grand Escalante Staircase, the Grand Staircase Escalante National Monument. I can tell you up there, that monument was created in 1996 by President Clinton. It was signed by President Clinton and Secretary of Interior Bruce Babbitt at the south rim of the Grand Canyon. And it was not signed in the state of Utah. At that particular time, since that time, it's been difficult for ranchers to stay in business. And as I shared with you in the information that I provided to you earlier, seven ranches in that monument have already gone out of business. There are four other ranchers that are on the ropes. And when I say on the ropes, they reduce their carrying capacity to the point where they're no longer a viable economic operation. And so it's just another layer of bureaucracy on top of the federal lands management, in that case it's the Bureau of Land Management, in this case it'd be the National, the US Forest Service. It makes it very difficult for those of us in the private sector and private business to do things on the land and important things. And as I shared with you earlier, just maintenance, you can't use mechanized equipment. If you want to do anything new, you know, you have to pocket in a horseback or take a pick and shovel. My grandpa used to do that about 100 years ago, and you can't get very much done in a day or a week or a month with a horse and Fresno or a slip. And so we need mechanized equipment. To close, people say that the grandfather, that the grazing rights are grandfathered in. I've spoken to ranchers in southern New Mexico, I've spoken to ranchers in Utah, several different states where they've been, they're been included in a national monument, and over a period of time, those ranches die a slow death. Their forests, whether they eventually just give up, they throw up their hands, whatever private inholdings they have surrounded by federal lands, those lands eventually become for sale. They're a willing and motivated seller. After you get beaten back so much that you can't do this, you don't have an economic ranching operation, most folks just say the heck with it. And so some environmental organizations, there are private groups that come in and they buy these properties. A lot of time, it's just, it's a fire sale, and so it's just not good. I guess in closing, I just want to share with you that our elected representatives, Congressman Gosar, the State Senator Sylvia Allen from this district, Representatives Bob Thorpe from Flagstaff, and Brenda Barton from Payson, all of them are opposed to this monument proposal. I know Congresswoman Kirkpatrick has been a supporter of the newly proposed Grand Canyon National Monument. On this one here, I'm a little surprised that she's not supporting it, but I think she sees how controversial this matter is. So in closing, I just want to say that this is nothing more than a controlled issue. Those lands are ready national Forest Service lands, with the exception of the private inholdings. They're managed well by the Coconino National Forest. The recreational users work with the Forest, with the agency. Sandra has shared with you how well things are working on the Coconino National Forest. Of course, they always need more money. We always can use more money to do a better job. But if it's not broke, I don't think we need to fix it. So with that, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come up and share with you just the comments, the concerns in the ranching community. Over the long run, it's not good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have quite a few folks who would like to speak tonight, and Cottonwood has a five-minute time limit. However, we're going to be here all night. And so is there anybody in this room who objects to cutting that down to three minutes per person? Okay, then the council will vote on that. I entertain a motion to cut the time down from five minutes to three.
Remove, we cut the time from five minutes to three.
A second there.
Okay, so the Vice Mayor made the motion, Mr. Dowling seconded it, all in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, can we turn on the lights, please? There you go. All right, the magic lights. So our first speaker is Brent Bitz.
Thank you very much. My name is Brent Bitz, Mayor Jones City Council. This evening, I'm representing the Verde River Basin Partnership. The Verde River Basin Partnership is pleased to announce that it is supporting the creation of the Sedona Verde Valley Red Rock National Monument. At a recent meeting, our board approved a motion of support and recognition of the benefits that such a designation would have in preserving the forest lands surrounding the Sedona area. The mission of the partnership is to work with the community in order to preserve the water resources of the Verde River Basin. An essential element of such preservation is maintaining healthy watersheds for the Verde River, Oak Creek, and other tributaries and riparian areas. Given that most of the proposed monument land is located within the Oak Creek watershed area, we feel that it is essential to take active steps to protect this critical forest area. We also believe that the creation of a national monument would be a wonderful step in that direction. Approximately 100 years ago, one of America's great presidents, Theodore Roosevelt, helped create the national monument program, and since then, it has been used by virtually every president to protect those forest lands that are the birthright of all Americans. We respectfully request that council follow in the steps of President Roosevelt and support the national monument proposal. City councils are rarely given the opportunity to leave a lasting legacy for future generations, and this is one of those times. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Could we like have a little bit of air conditioning? Is anybody in here hot?
Yeah.
Okay, our next speaker is David Rayburn.
Evening, and my name is David Rayburn. I live in Sedona in Oak Creek Canyon. And I do want to thank this council very much for spending so much time on this issue. And I have submitted to all of you a three-page document that I called a speech, which was obviously too long to give as a speech with more details. But tonight, I'm glad to announce that I've just started a new environmental group. I call it KSC, for Keep Sedona Clean. Our motto is Clean Streets and Clean Politics. As Cottonwood residents, what would you do if you had the KSB gang move into your neighborhood, start shooting up the place, high on drugs and alcohol, partying until dawn? You'd call the police. Why? Because the KSB gang would be breaking the law. Well, how is KSB actually breaking the law? They are relying on one-man rule to get their, what they want. One-man rule goes by many names: dictatorship, monarchy, despotism, tyranny. The American Revolution was fought to end one-man rule, and the Constitution was written to guarantee that one-man rule would never be the law of the land. Yet here is KSB seeking to have one signature determine the future of the entire Sedona-Verde Valley area. KSB entitled their proposal Sedona Verde Valley Red Rock National Monument. Now to me, that is a pretty awkward name. Why not just call it Sedona Red Rock National Monument? That's kind of catchy. Why did they include the Verde Valley? I think it's to include Cottonwood, Clarkdale, and Camp Verde. You may not be in the monument boundaries now, but that can all change when KSB proposal reaches the president's desk. Why do I humorously refer to the KSB gang? It's not because I think it's funny, it's because I think it's absurd that I've had to waste two months of my life fighting this KSB stupid proposal. For me, KSB is not a sweet environmental group. Rather, KSB is that proverbial neighbor from hell who won't care about what his neighbors think. I ask this council to rebuke KSB for their insensitive behavior and tell them in no uncertain terms that they have been not acting like good neighbors by continuing to insist on submitting this abomination of a proposal for one man to sign. KSC, where you get both Clean Streets and Clean Politics. I ask that you join my new environmental group and clean up local politics now. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about this. I'm a resident of the Village of Oak Creek, and we heard, actually, the proponents give their position, and then we heard three presentations from opponents. And regardless of what you think of that process, the arguments are interesting because two of the three arguments said, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. But you also heard the argument that the state should own all these lands, that the Antiquities Act is unconstitutional, that it's not democracy to proceed with the Antiquities Act, even though, of course, it was an act of Congress, the current, and Congress can destroy it anytime it wants. But it's the contradiction between the two positions that's at. One says Amendment 12 is sufficient. We don't need to do anything. It's great, why change it? Now, on the other hand, you have people saying, well, the state should own this land in the first place, and Representatives Allen and Barton and Thorpe and Gosar have all introduced legislation to try to convert the national forest to state-owned land. And when they make that case, they make the argument that it's because the federal land doesn't make money for the state. If the state had it, it'd make money off of it. Well, how can you make money off the national forest land unless you either lease it or sell it? All those are new uses that don't currently exist. This is the threat that this group, which includes people from KSB and a number of other groups, has as a concern, and that's because they watched the population of Sedona quadruple to the ranch rates, and it was only stopped by Amendment 12. And I can tell you, there's traffic jams now. Put a couple more subdivisions around Courthouse Buote and, you know, some of those places, and apart from destroying the basic beauty of that property, it has a host of environmental impacts that will go right along with, you know, the planning departments evaluate. So the fact that there's this contradictory argument in opposing this leaves me to ask the question, so what is their real purpose, why they oppose this? Is it because they have this litany of, well, you can't depend on this, and well, you can't depend on that? Or is it just fundamentally that it doesn't fall into their, you know, version of how to make money off this land in the future?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak tonight. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you for hearing both sides of this argument, and I do hope that you will take it to heart to do your own research and to go and answer the questions on your own from both sides, because there is a lot of information out there that contradicts from side to side. Okay? I'm here tonight to announce that Friends of the Verde Greenway is endorsing the movement to preserve permanently the scenic areas that surround Sedona as a national monument. And they're doing this as a thoughtful process, because they did research, and they listened to both sides, and they came to the conclusion that having a national monument is the best way to preserve permanently the lands that encompass the watershed for the Verde River. Let me read the letter that was written to the coalition. Friends of the Verde Greenway is pleased to announce that it is supporting the creation of the Sedona Verde Valley Red Rock National Monument. At a recent meeting, our board approved a motion of support and recognition of the benefits that such a designation may have in preserving stream flow in the Verde River and its tributaries. Our mission is to restore, preserve, and promote the natural, cultural, scenic, and recreational resources of the Verde River and its tributaries. Given that all of the proposed monument land is located within the Verde watershed, we feel- feel that it is essential to take active steps to protect this critical area. This is a courageous move towards conservation. This is a move of a local group that I am a founding member of to stand up and say, "We would like permanent protection for this area that has been protected through Amendment 12." We are aware that Amendment 12 no longer is a standing separate amendment of the current reorganization of the management plan. The process was started in 2013 and is still going under review. Amendment 12 is now infused into that management plan with different wording that covers all management plans in national forests because of Supreme Court legislation that says that we cannot have something like an Amendment 12. We cannot have our local national forest administrators say that it will be legally untenable to have land swaps. They can only prescribe, they can only suggest that that would happen. I take this to heart and another organization takes it to heart also. Bob Rothrock cannot be here, but I have his letter from the Verdi Valley Land Preservation Institute.
So Peggy, your three minutes are up. Can you just make it real quick?
Okay. Okay, I'll read this. "To whom it may concern, on behalf of the Board of Directors," this is the Verdi Valley Land Preservation Institute, "on behalf of the Board of Directors, we support the concept of Sedona-Verdi Valley Red Rock National Monument. To have the unique land in this area designated a national monument, we will send a representative to assist in drafting their proposal. Verdi Valley Land Preservation's mission is to preserve and enhance our open space. National monument designation could accomplish both of these objectives. Land trades will not be allowed. Preserving open space, a national monument, will also increase the ability of the managing area agency to preserve the area's resources. Thank you for the opportunity to assist in this effort."
Thank you, and I apologize, I should have called you Ms. Chaykin instead of Peggy, but it's just, it just came out. Okay, so Jeannie Freeland.
Again, thank you for taking the time. I know it's a lot of the time and a lot of attention. I only decided to come today and I had no idea what I would say, I still don't. I just felt like I needed to stand up and let you know that there is some balance here in people who feel one way and the other. I know that this has been an exceedingly controversial issue and I think there's been more noise on the side of people who are opposing this. And I just feel that the Amendment 12, even if the Amendment 12 were not being weakened, which it is, even if it weren't, there is no guarantee that it would continue. It does not have the force of law. If you're going to really protect something, the only real shot you have at it is to have a statute or something that has the force of law, as would a national monument designation. So because of the desire to preserve the land here, the open land and watershed and for us to have something to pass on to our children and grandchildren, I'm a grandmother and I would like to see my grandchildren be able to live here when they are grown. So I'm just going to leave it at that and again, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Karen Keller.
First, I want to thank the mayor and the council for taking the time to hear the proponents of real permanent protection, possibly a national monument, and protection of our quality of life and our incredible Verdi Valley and Red Rock awe-inspiring national forest and public lands. I'm just a citizen that moved to this area almost 17 years ago seeking quality of life. However, I made that decision back in 1971 while still living in Phoenix. I love the fact that this area was surrounded by national forest. I love the outdoors, awesome beauty, open spaces that give peace, mountains, hiking, fishing, bird watching, fresh air, clean air, and all the things that make a healthy ecosystem for all living things. I hoped that being surrounded by federally protected lands would limit the overdevelopment that I witnessed with heartbreak in once smaller and healthier Phoenix. And I want to note that I started helping KSB because KSB has a long history of conservation that goes back to 1972. And no one should ever, ever say bad things about KSB. You may not agree with what we're doing right now, but you shouldn't take its history and its intent away from it. And any American has the right to petition and to petition within their government and as a citizen and as all citizens, we have that right. The key opponents of permanent protection are financially backed by some of the wealthiest people in our country. Like a machine, they drone out a lot of noise. This money and persistence is a real threat to the Forest Service's current vulnerable Amendment 12. First, at a national level, they're backed by Americans for Prosperity, a Koch Brother organization of dark money that believes all federal and public land should be privatized. They have listed stopping this permanent protection effort at the top of their list on their Arizona agenda, found on the web. And because Mr. Kadar said they're not being sponsored by it, I'll respect that, but with dark money, you never know. Then locally, the key opponents in the Arizona for Liberty have brought in as their support Arizona Representative Thorpe, who has introduced bills to take all federal and public lands for the state to sell. The results of a recent respectable poll of western states concluded that 71% of the people do not want the states to take back federal lands and public lands. Our quality of life in this drought-prone area can't sustain large housing developments, protect our precious antiquities if there are luxury resorts, malls that harm small businesses, pollution, noise and private, no trespassing signs, no fishing, no hunting in areas we came here to enjoy for numerous recreation activities. Growth must be sustainable. As a country, as cities, as citizens, we need to stop the greed and all it's trying to take from us. I haven't met a proponent of real permanent protections yet that wanted it for profit. The desire to protect this area came from their souls. Here's the real black box, but it's already been brought out. Mr. Kadar puts all his emphasis on fears of permanent protections of a national monument, but he failed to mention the real agenda of support for the states to take back the lands.
Thank you so much. Nancy Brown.
Hi, I'm Nancy Brown and thank you, councilor and mayor. I want to address briefly the, this is a very complex subject and I can't possibly give you all the details in three minutes, but I have studied all the 117 national monuments and I can tell you that every single one is different. Almost all of them are managed differently. All of them have different values, parameters. They are managed either by BLM, National Park Service, or the National Forest Service, all with radically different ideas on restrictions and values. So you have to be very careful in looking at sources that people use for going, "Well, you can't do this or you can't do that." They're quoting a park, they're quoting BLM land, they're quoting a group that requested that there were restrictions. This national monument proposal is very unique and it's as unique as the land that it encompasses. And I think that the most important thing you need to consider is what this group is doing with a national monument proposal. It is unique and it is extraordinary. There has been since 1906, when Theodore Roosevelt started this whole Antiquities Act thing, there have been just an ageless fight. The conservationists against the industrialists, the government protection of the land versus the anti-federal government people. This has been going on, this is not new, it's been going on since 1908. So what we have here is a continuation of that. I have looked at all of the objections that have been proposed, have been displayed. They include from the states' rights activists, from the mining, from the commercial interests, and just individuals that are misinformed, and there are a lot of them. And all of these objections relate to this area being a park. This area is not going to be a park. It could not be a park if we wanted it to be a park. And I've had that confirmed by the council's presidential quality. They laughed at me when I said, "Well, could this be a park?" And they said, "How could it be a park? You'd have to submit compelling evidence that your forest was managing the area wrong, grossly. It would have to go through your congressional representative in Congress and then good luck with getting that passed in Congress." So I want to put to rest, first of all, that this is going to have a lot of restrictions because it's going to be a national park. No forest-managed national monument since 1978 has ever become a park. So I think historically, the president's office, Congress is giving you a message that this will not be a park. This is where I just want to stress that it's so important to check sources. You have a copy of what I wanted to say, which is called "The Ageless Fight to Protect Special Public Lands" and a copy of my article that appeared about this subject in the Verdi Independent Newspaper on October 15th. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Harry Dano Levis? Is Harry still here? Donna Varney?
Hi, thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. My name is Donna Joy Varney. I'm a longtime resident, 25 years.
I came into the Verdi Valley and I loved it. I love the character of the small-town charm from Camp Verdi, Cottonwood, Sedona. So we made Sedona our home. And in doing that, you know, I raised my son here, he went to Migas High School. Our community is so blended. It's not Cottonwood, Sedona, Verdi Valley. We're all one family, one group. One person may live in Sedona, but they may be employed in Cottonwood or vice versa. So when we look at our overall community, one change with this type will change us permanently forever. And when we go back to the character of our personalities, our people, the people that make us who we are, we need to give them the right to have a say-so. We've got businesses, we've got families, we've got grandkids, we've got a lot vested in this area and there's a lot of passion built up here. So people that they are one way or another, and I'm going to say that when KSB gave their first proposal, I said, "Yes, I agree with this." But then through the education process, when I researched and when I spoke to Tom O'Halloran, I realized this is not a good deal for Sedona, the outlining areas or anyone, because it permanently changes our character. And our character is not a national monument. Our character is the small-town charm that each of us came here and live here for today. So thank you very much for keeping it educational. Everybody has a different point of view, but I think the people really need to be involved in this process because once that signature's done, it's done and we won't have a say-so. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next is Gail Simpson.
Thank you again for having us all speak before you tonight. It's really appreciated that you're taking the time to listen. I have a whole paper written out of things to talk about, but as I've heard other comments, I'd like to comment on those things. And one of the issues is local control and not having a chance to vote on what we want to do here. But then I read again about the land trades that occurred in Washington at the signature added to the end of a must-pass armspending bill that traded away oak flats and the lives and the land of all those people and that had been honored, their lands had been honored with presidential designation, starting in 1955 and again in 1971 by two different presidents. That was evaporated at John McCain and Jeff Flake's signature on that bill that passed in December of 2014. I also remember how John McCain did the same thing with the Ruskin land trade in 2003. I also remember, as I lived here, a public meeting held at the casino in Camp Verdi after the fact, after it was a done deal. And 600 people from Verdi Valley showed up at that public meeting. John McCain was there, Jeff Flake was not, clamoring about the lack of consideration for the Verdi Valley watershed and how 2,200 acres of land at the corner of I-17 and 260 was now traded for development, as well as 820 acres near Clarkdale. The community was outraged. That's what happens when Washington does sign your life away with a single signature without any input. I support the national monument because that is the only way now to be assured that this land will be preserved, that our watershed will be preserved for future generations. And I just really hope that you consider the forces that are against each other here. It seems to me the people who support the monument have nothing to gain except a good night's sleep and peace of mind once this land is protected. However, the other people are fearful that they will not get their real estate ventures or their mining or their development or whatever their self-serving interests are. If it's selling land even for education, that does not serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ron Volkman.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. My name's Ron Volkman. Moved to Cottonwood in 1974, rented a house two blocks from here on Penali. Now I live out on Bill Gray Road, which believe it or not, is inside this monument proposal. But I'm here tonight to speak to you as a Government Affairs Director for the Sedona-Verdi Valley Association of Realtors. Our Board of Directors has asked that I deliver to you their unanimously approved motion, which states, "The Sedona-Verdi Valley Board of Directors does not support the establishment of the Sedona-Verdi Valley Red Rock National Monument." And let me tell you a little bit about why they took this action. Last June the 10th, I was at a city council meeting, one of the few people in the audience at Sedona City Council, and that's when Tom O'Halloran and KSB proposed the national monument. They made it clear that they were on a fast track to get this done before President Obama left office. They admitted that. And frankly, I'll say that they arrogantly thought they were going to just bypass public input totally and put this through. They thought council would vote. Luckily, the council hit the brakes, said, "No, you go out, do public outreach, you find out what people are feeling about this." That's what's taken place since June, is nine or 10 forums. I think I've been to all but two of them. And I'm telling you, I've seen a lot of politics in my years here, but all of them were attended by anywhere from 75 to 120 people and anybody, whichever side you're on, 30 to 1 against it. I mean, it just was, I've never seen such a bunch of people from every angle, every politics, every persuasion, really come together under this umbrella of opposing this. Our Board of Directors asked that I research this matter and I did that. They also made a commitment to hold a pro and con forum, which they did on September 21st. But I'll tell you what, after studying this thing intensively, the pro sides just don't add up compared to the dangerous possibilities which a national monument poses to Sedona and the Verdi Valley and to you, believe me. The language in the management recommendation- The language in the management recommendations, which are drafted by KSB, are only suggestions, which they admit they could be changed later. Words matter. Ask any attorney. KSB's recommendations are broad, they're vague, and they are definitely subject to interpretation. That's what brings on litigation. I'm the guy who, when I heard about this, called the utility companies, called ADOT, called the governor's office. They hadn't heard a whisper of this. Not a thing. Our research and my research with property owners, business owners, realtors, and residents in other national monuments verifies that what they were promised is not what they got. Grazing rights, water rights, recreation rights were negated or carved back enormously to the regret of those communities, to the regret of those communities and those residents. Cottonwood and Sedona are urbanized area. There has never been a national monument that was laid on top of a city. I mean, to say it's problematic is putting it minimally. Anyway, the water rights issue also, when a national monument goes in, and it's happened before, as one of the people said, sometimes there's a federal reservation of water rights. Will the Verdi watershed and the Oak Creek watershed? Would be complex and mixed up into the deal. All I'm saying is, it's not a good idea. I realize this wasn't agendized for tonight. I've talked to Representative Ann Kirkpatrick's office. She wants to hear the opinion. You will weigh in big. So, it wasn't agendized for a vote, but I hope your next meeting, you do bring it up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Penny Pavlich?
Sorry, it's Peggy Pavlich. I have terrible handwriting.
I'm so sorry. I can see that now. I have terrible reading habits, I guess.
I just want to say thank you very much for hearing me out. I do not live in Cottonwood, I live in the village of Oak Creek. I'm involved in the opposition to this national monument, but I want to assure you, I'm not involved with any dark money. I don't hate the environment. I'm not a big developer. I'm just a person who started hearing about this a couple months ago, and when my inquiries for information about who the legal advisors were, who the funders, who the writers, who the contacts were, were denied. In fact, I was blocked from a Facebook page run by these people because I was asking the wrong questions. That's what we're dealing with. The anger and the frustration about Joe Citizen, like me, dealing with this organization is because they will not answer questions. Today, I want to know whose name is going to be on that proposal. I would like these people to answer questions like that. I want to know who's writing it, who's investigating it, who's got the legal expertise, the environmental expertise. Frankly, I have seen a lot more of that coming from the opposition, because the people on the opposition like me, who are pitching in, just trying to do our own research, trying to find answers, we are scared to death about what's happening here. Here's what I've found out. This is a group of people that is writing a proposal that will put our entire valley at risk. They will not be personally accountable for the permanent consequences that this proposal, when approved by the president, will undertake. After it's approved, game over, before it's approved, as soon as it goes to Washington, these people lose control. We lose control. What happens is, it gets rewritten before the president sees it, and it gets rewritten after the president signs it. Once it goes into the bureaucratic mess of Washington, DC, we lose more control, because that's the nature of a national monument. And I am asking you, I know you won't be in the monument, but your community will completely change as soon as this monument comes in, because there's no way around it. I'm sure I'm not telling you anything when it comes to the feds. The Forest Service has done a beautiful job, very interactive with the community in this valley, and what I've heard at all these meetings is a lot of people praising the Forest Service. Thank you for letting me speak, and thank you for considering this.
Thank you very much. Paul? Pavlich?
I thank you all a lot for being here and listening to all this tonight. I admire that. I'm sure you all have kids and grandkids. I am a second-generation native Arizonan. I've been here a long, long time. I've pretty much seen it all come and go. I'm in the majority opposition to this. This has not been a transparent or honest process. This is more federal regulation. There is, I assure you, there is no dark money, no Koch Brothers, no Americans for Prosperity. That is all a boogeyman, that is all BS. It's fear tactics. None of that has been happening. These are people that are taking money out of their own pocket to print buttons and to print materials to put our side out there. I really appreciate you guys listening tonight. I've seen the loss of access, the use rights. You know, the deal is with these people, and I say "these people" because I don't say that in a degrading way, other than you heard them again tonight. You heard them get up and say, "Well, these people, they're just misinformation, uninformed." We've been marginalized, we've been blocked from pages. We've been told we don't have credentials. I have credentials. I have graduate degrees. I've taught history, I've taught science, I've taught, I have credentials. I'm a second-generation Arizonan, and I don't appreciate that. The deal is, it's never enough. It's never going to be enough. We have, right here, we have Sycamore Creek, we have Secret Mountain Wilderness, Walnut Canyon, Clear Creek, Fossil Creek, Pine Mountain, gigantic wilderness areas, gigantic places to go recreate and enjoy. We do not need another 160,000-acre land grab right here, surrounding our houses, and the feds coming in and making all the rules. And I'm very fearful of it. I've seen it before, and I'm scared to death of it. It's mostly driven by people that are from somewhere else, and it will never be enough. Please don't make this monumental mistake. We really need to understand that the Forest Service has done a great job. I love to go out on the forest. I want my kids and my grandkids to be able to go out on the forest and camp and take their Dutch ovens and cook and shoot their pistols if they choose to, like we've all done with our families for generations. Much of that will go away. And I hope that you guys, as you go down the road, get involved and join the opposition. We are by far in the majority. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Dale Casey?
Mayor, members of the council. I would like to take this opportunity to put this on a more personal level, and how it will affect each of us if this national monument becomes such an imposition to all of us. I've lived in the Verdi Valley, in Sedona in particular, for 25 years. I built my home, and unfortunately, the concrete driveway is starting to spald around the edges. Within five years, I'm going to have to replace my driveway. If this becomes a national monument, of which I will be an inholder, I will be required not only to see or receive permits from the city of Sedona, but I will also probably be required to do a NEPA study at my expense, tens of thousands of dollars, could take three to five years. And at the end of that expense and that time, there's a good chance that some bureaucrat sitting in a basement office in Washington, DC, may tell me, "No, I can't put that driveway in, because the cement truck might run over a lizard." It sounds ridiculous, but it is a fact. And all of us in the Verdi Valley could be subject to this kind of what I call "federal abuse." Now, for these people to say that the opposition is funded by black money, that is an insult to me. I am just a citizen of this country. I love America, and for the federal government and people like KSB and the others to impose this on all of us without us having a say, it just smacks against our republic. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Piper?
Mayor, City Council. I was going to sit back and just take it easy tonight, but I didn't. I want you to know, I'm Fred Piper. I'm a 90-year resident of Sedona and the Verdi Valley. As a matter of fact, I am the last living native that was working in World War II from Sedona. Sedona has been my home. I see a lot of things here on this national monument thing, but it appears to me that these people are trying to promote this national monument thing, or drifters just came in here from someplace, that they have screwed the country up so bad they can't live there, and then come here to Cottonwood and want to ruin it like they did where they came from. That's my opinion of it. My comments and my speech are all my own. I have not enticed by no one to say what I'm doing. But what are we going to do? They keep drifting in all the time. Can't we put a border up someplace? They would all, most of the people right now, would like to close the door when they got here. Well, it ain't that way. We live here. And besides that, I am a highly decorated veteran from World War II, flew 36 heavy bombing missions over Germany, and I will tell you, I appreciate the fact that the people this day in Cottonwood and the Verdi Valley are not speaking Jap or German because of my efforts. So, anywhere from there, I've heard the comments on both sides. I don't like it. I don't want to see it go. I've only got a few years left in this Verdi Valley, and I'd like to live them in peace. So, I would urge Mayor, City Council, vote this thing down. We don't need it. It's a peaceful valley. Let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Mr. Brian Myers?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Brian Myers. I'm a 20-year resident of the Verdi Valley. Today, I represent the Sierra Club, both the local Verdi Valley group and the Grand Canyon State Chapter of Arizona. We strongly believe that the national monument designation is the best way to protect the public lands surrounding the Cottonwood and Sedona region that are and will continue to be managed by the U.S. Forest Service. The national monument designation will halt land trades and mining within the monument designation and protect the wildlife, antiquities, and natural scenic beauty of the area, without affecting private land ownership, water rights, or public access. There are many viable reasons to create a national monument for this region, but foremost and most importantly, it will block the movement to sell or transfer to the state our public lands, which are our heritage as Americans. Once our public lands have been transferred away from us to the state, then the state can sell them to the highest bidder, which can include but not be limited to private and corporate interests, as well as any foreign entity for any use or misuse, such as natural resource development, drilling for oil, gas exploration. In addition, unchecked development will degrade the Oak Creek and Verdi River watershed and deplete our limited water aquifer resources. We do not want to follow California with their own water crisis. Our public lands being sold to private ownership will mean there will be no public access for anyone to enjoy their traditional recreations, which would include hiking, trail bikes, horseback riding, hunting, fishing, camping, and any other public activities. The sale of our public lands would terminate generations of history and legacy that has been the hallmark of our Verdi Valley community. The loss of public access to our forests and wilderness lands will severely limit the tourism that drives the economy of the Cottonwood and Sedona area. That negative impact in our community will be devastating and incalculable. It will dramatically affect current and future generations that have been able to live and thrive in our beautiful Verdi Valley. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, Council, do you have any comments?
I'll speak up. First off, I want to thank all of you for showing up here tonight and voicing your opinion. Also, I appreciate how respectful you've kept your comments to each other. This is a very emotional topic that we're talking about, and you turning out to share your enthusiasm for the process is nice, and it's part of what we're all trying to do, even us up here, who really will not have a voice in this when it's all said and done. You have the voice. I've always been a proponent of local control. I think the closer you keep control to the people who are directly affected, the better it is for everybody. The problem is, is this is all about a lack of control. We don't control the national forests. We don't control the national park system. My family came here 100 years ago. They founded Red Canyon Ranch, which later became the Hancock Ranch, which later became Plucky Ruins. That was private land that was taken away and given to the public. Was that better or worse? You can make an argument both ways. The family enjoyed the land for generations. The state now will enjoy that land for generations. So, either way you go, there's a winner. I think this decision, however we go, you won't see the effects of it in my generation, probably not the next generation, but well down the road. And that's, I think, what's got everybody so emotional, is where are we going with this and what's the outcome? Because it's so important that we make the right decision now. So, thank you once again for all showing up and voicing your opinion.
Mr. Hadegi, or Vice Mayor? Mr. Dowlen, or?
Just like drinking from a fire hose. A lot of information, a lot of evaluation take place.
Just really wanted to have the council be aware of both sides of the issue and understand, you know, how the people feel about the issue. And we aren't here to make a decision tonight, but we wanted to learn the pros and the cons. And we appreciate, really, the civility that you're expressing here. And I just have one little teeny thing to say about mining. If it weren't for mining, none of us would have a house. We'd still be in the Dark Ages. And so, I just want everybody to think about, from the time you're an infant until the time you die, how many minerals your body takes. And so, and I also grew up in Sierra Vista and went to Bisbee a lot and saw the picture that you showed of, in the 50s and 60s, of them mining, but none of us would have a house, and none of us would have a car, for that matter, if it weren't for mining. So, if we can look at that with a little bit of balance and realize that some areas on the globe will have residual results from mining, but, you know, we would still be living in a cave if it weren't for that, so. Anything else that anybody wants to share or say? Okay, I would like you all to stay, because we kind of took things out of order for us to have the call to the public, because Mr. Martinez has been sitting here, I think he's still here, are you in the back row there? He's come to talk about a very important event, and I would like everybody to be able to hear about that, because it's important. So, I know that everybody will get up and leave, and his time spent here would not be very profitable then, so. And thank you for your two-hour wait for the call to the public.
As, the best part is yet to come, so. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Honorable Counsel. My name is John Martinez, and I come before you not as a counselor from the city of Sedona, but as a citizen of the Verdi Valley. In 2012, the city of Cottonwood hosted the Traveling Vietnam Wall to honor the Vietnam veterans. And from what I saw and from what I heard, you guys did a fantastic job. So, I applaud you for what you did. In 2016, Sedona will have the honor to host that same thing of welcoming the Vietnam veterans. I know we have a number of Vietnam veterans here in the audience, and so I'm sure we all will say, "Thank you," because they did one heck of a job. They weren't necessarily, in fact, that's a strong word, they were not honored when they came back. You know, there was a lot of names calling out You know, there was a lot of names calling at them, and they could probably describe better than I could do what they had to endure. But what I am, what I come before you is that Sedona contributed a donation to Cottonwood to make the Vietnam Wall be here. What I'm talking about, maybe I'm kind of skirting this, it's the traveling wall that is an eighty percent replication of the actual wall, that wall that is in Washington, D.C. We have contacted that organization, and they are going to bring that wall to Sedona. I don't have to tell you how much that event cost just for the wall. Now, I'm basically asking maybe for a small donation for the city, but if we got TV land here and all the citizens, is for them to donate to this worthwhile organization. And to do that, I am asking all of you to log in to www communitycountsaz.org. The letter that I handed out to you was made before we actually were able to get a button on that website so that you could donate. In the, like, the third paragraph on the bottom, if you choose, you can mail a donation. Hopefully, this letter will appear somewhere on your website so that the citizens of Cottonwood and citizens of the Verde Valley can look at your website and say, this is where I want to go to donate to this, as we all know, worthwhile organization. So once again, what I'm asking is that you log onto or mail, base that, to www communitycountsaz.org. When you get there, there'll be tabs up on top. Click on the Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans, and you'll see a nice, easy button that says Donate. As we all know, and there was a very well song written, especially with the Veterans of Vietnam, is that "All gave some, some gave all." And those that did, their name is honored on that wall. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and I would ask... It is the public comment, so I can't comment on your comments, but I can ask the city manager to please put on a future agenda the question as to whether the city council would like to contribute to this effort. As he said, Sedona has contributed every single year about $2,000. Every year for when it traveled to Camp Verde, when it came to Cottonwood, when it went to Clarkdale, they have contributed every year. So I would like our council to be able to consider returning that favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Honorable Council.
Okay, so, we'll move on with the agenda. Thank you all for being here tonight. Where are we? Proclamations? Let's see. A brief summary.
Updates.
Okay. I marked them out. Okay. Okay, so, the next item is a brief summary of current events, and thank you all. And I'm gonna skip mine tonight, but possibly the city manager has some updates for us.
Madam Mayor, council members, I don't have any updates for tonight.
Okay, and any other council members have a burning desire to share what you've been doing? All right, we'll go ahead and move on. Okay, proclamations. Okay, we do not have anyone here to accept the diabetes proclamation. I'll just read through it real quickly. Whereas in the United States, nearly thirty million people, including approximately 692,311 people in Arizona, have diabetes, a serious disease with potentially life-threatening complications, such as heart disease, stroke, blindness, kidney disease, and amputation. And whereas, an additional eighty-six million people in the United States are at risk for developing type-two diabetes. And whereas, recent estimates project that as many as one in three American adults will have diabetes in 2050 if current trends continue. And whereas, an increase in community awareness is necessary to put a stop to the diabetes epidemic. Now therefore, I Diane Jones, Mayor of Cottonwood, Arizona, do hereby proclaim November 2015 to be American Diabetes Month in Cottonwood, Arizona, and encourage all Americans to recognize American Diabetes Month and be part of the American Diabetes Association Stop Diabetes Movement to confront, fight, and most importantly, change the future of this deadly disease. Dated this third day of November 2015, and there's probably not a single person in this room who has not been impacted by this disease. Either they have it themselves, or they have a family member, a friend. Everybody's impacted by this illness. So I really do want to have us all come together and think about that this month during American Diabetes Month. Our next proclamation, and we have Lana Tolleson and we have Lori Mayberry. I said it right? I'm catching on after thirty years. So I just did a TV show the other day with Jen Mayberry on Trek About, a hiking club for the Yabba Pike County Health Department, and I introduced her as, you know, like the TV character pronunciation. Like, oh, I know better than that. So anyway, so we have some folks here tonight to accept this proclamation. And this is about our geotourism effort that's coming up, and I think on November 12th, yeah, 12th, I think they're going to launch the website. But anyway, whereas tourism and the revenue generated thereby are essential financial components for maintaining and enhancing Cottonwood's economy and for generating necessary funding for public services and amenities. And whereas, the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce is dedicated to building a strong local economy. And whereas, the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce defines geotourism as tourism that sustains or enhances the geographical character of a place, its environment, heritage, and aesthetics. Whereas, these geotourism objectives encourage citizens and visitors to get involved rather than remain tourism spectators. And whereas, the values stated by these declarations and definitions of geotourism clearly align with those already respected and promoted by the city government and the community. Now therefore, I Diane Jones, Mayor of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, do hereby declare the City of Cottonwood's formal recognition and endorsement of the sustainable geotourism values and efforts for the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce. So would you like to come up and accept this proclamation? And if anybody from the council, if you'd like to come down and help deliver this to them, please feel free to do that.
Being told by my boss I need to come down. It takes too much time to get down there, boss. So we would like to present this to all the city council. And thank you for your work in geotourism. Any words of wisdom?
Notes at the meeting can go on.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
You're welcome. I can't wait to see the website.
It'll be fine.
Did anybody else want to do a call to the public? We had, only had one form filled out. Did everybody get a call to the public? Okay, so just go ahead and turn those in, that's for another item. Okay. Approval of the minutes. Work session of October 13, 2015, regular meeting of October 20, 2015, and special work session of October 27, 2015. Any comments on this item?
I move we approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Dowling made the motion. Mr. Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. And does anybody here think they need more than three minutes to speak on this item? We've already made a motion to cut it down to three minutes. If members of the public don't object, we'll just stick with that. Okay. Unfinished business. Ordinance Number 616, amending Section 308 Medical Marijuana Facilities, Subsection C3 Medical Marijuana Cultivation Facilities and Medical Marijuana Infusion Facilities of the City's zoning ordinance, second and final reading.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Members?
Mr. Scully.
Okay. This is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance. It's a text amendment. It's a second reading. So there's been a number of meetings already to discuss this. The proposal came to us from, originally from, the source was the operator of the cultivation facility. And so as staff, we prepared the draft language for consideration of the city council. And it's primarily a land use issue. So it would amend the section of dealing with the cultivation facilities. And the effect of, what's being asked for you is to either approve or deny the amendment, the effect of denying the amendment, would be to keep the current zoning from cultivation. And if it was approved, it would allow the applicant to expand their building, but it would also apply generally to the whole city. And so the staff does not have recommendation. We're here to provide the direction from the, you know, whatever the direction of the council is on this. So that's pretty much it, since we've discussed this before.
Yes, we've discussed it two or three times, twice at least, I think.
And then going back to the original development disorder, which was in 2011, and then the establishment of the dispensary, which was in 2013, initial use permit for the cultivation facility, which was a year ago, and then this amendment to the existing ordinance.
Okay, so I would go ahead and ask, I guess, go ahead and, council, would you like to make any comments before we take comments?
Madam Mayor, when will we allow the public to speak first?
Okay. So we'll go ahead and... Whoops, those are, those are those. Okay, and we also have... Okay, that's that. And Mr. Martinez has spoken. Okay, so we just have these. Okay, so the first speaker is Esther Talbert. Oh, that was the monument. Oh, I didn't call her, but she must not have been here. That was mixed up in these. Otherwise, she would have let me know. Okay. Edna Erins.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am a third-generation Arizonan. I did move away, but I came back, and I came back to the Verde Valley, because my mother was, my parents lived here in the Verde Valley. My background is that I have been a schoolteacher for the last, well, since 1974. And I still substitute here within the Cottonwood School District, and I have been a full-time teacher at a couple of the charter schools here. And am very acutely aware of the amount of marijuana that's out there in our community that is so easy for these young people to get. I have personal friends that have gone to the doctor on Main Street and have gotten a marijuana card. They know way in this world needed that marijuana card, except they wanted it. I, probably not after tonight, but I could have gone down there at any time and gotten a marijuana card. Just pay my fee, tell them my story, and would have been able to get it. Would it have maybe alleviated some of the pain I was in? Yes, but marijuana is very addictive. I have seen this through the years. Well, I just do it once in a while. But I haven't met anybody that could cut themselves off without receiving help from other staff, other medical staff, or counselors, or whatever. The cost to our community is tremendous, both in the police manpower that we have and the number of youth that we pick up that have marijuana with them, the medical people that I have come across at the hospital that were taken there because they were out of their mind from being on marijuana. There's that expense, and the expense to our schools has been tremendous. How do they deal with the kids that are on marijuana? Generally, if they're caught on campus, they're kicked out. Where do they go? They go to the charter schools for a couple of years, and then they go back into the public school system. Has that habit stopped? No. Do they have such easy access? Yes. I think that when this law was placed here in Arizona, it was for, people that voted for it, was they wanted it for medical. People that are dying from cancer, yes, it does help. It alleviates that pain. But they had no way of realizing how easy it was going to be to be able to go get one of those cards and have marijuana. My friends that I have seen go to it have just gone downhill. They're not able to hold down a job. That puts them on welfare. That puts them under our county medical system, and we pay for it. The cost benefit from having this increase and having it in our community will no way benefit more than what the cost is going to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob Williams?
Been sitting a little while, haven't we?
Yeah.
My name is Rob Williams, and I am the pastor of Verde Baptist Church. And if I'd known of the crowd tonight, I would have brought an offering plate. I'd have missed that opportunity. I am also a board member of Mingus Union, and probably more importantly, I am a father of three. I'm against Ordinance 616, the lifting of restrictions upon the size of marijuana facilities here in Cottonwood. As much as I respect the business decision to allow the expansion of such a facility, and as much as I respect the possible economic impact that could be positive to the community, I believe that the unknown negative social impact is of greater concern. With certainly the potential state approval of the recreational use of marijuana looming, it seems best for us as a small community to not poise ourselves to lead the pack in regards to the growing processing of marijuana. It has become easier to obtain. It's as dangerous as ever, as I am regularly seeing in my role as pastor, and especially in my role as a board member at Mingus. My desire is that, as a council, that you would recognize and give some legitimate weight to the fact that the majority, and I'm being kind by saying majority, it's probably exclusive, the majority of clergy in our community, the great majority, if not exclusive, school administrators in our town, we oppose this. And when I speak of social... And when I speak of social impact, I'm absolutely speaking to the damage that it does to people. But when I say social impact, I am also speaking of the relational, social impact between you, City Council, and the community. I can't even imagine talking to a police officer, of which I have talked to many, that oppose this. And administrators and schoolteachers, how could a community look at that crowd of career and leaders in our community and say, "No, we're going to do it anyway"? That's a social impact, in my opinion. And I appreciate just the opportunity to be able to speak to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mark White.
Mayor, Council? My name is Mark White. I've lived here about a year and a half, moved into right up the, up the road here. I come to you as, once a substance abuser, but also as one that has dealt with substance abuse for over twenty years. I have a master's in counseling. In California, you know, was the first one to be able to legalize marijuana, medical marijuana. And while I was there, that's where I moved from, I moved from San Diego. I worked for a nonprofit organization called San Diego Rescue Mission. I worked there eight years. And it was right in the heart of San Diego. And the mission had a capacity of about two hundred men, and then it had women and children, but mostly I dealt with, was the men. And usually, between thirty-five, thirty to thirty-five men, I would be counseling. And about ninety percent of them were either, because of drugs, being addicts and wound up homeless, because of the substance abuse, or did drugs, and then wind up, wound up doing crimes. And therefore, the police officers would use San Diego Rescue Mission as kind of a place where, okay, we'll go take them to get cleaned up. Now, as I sat there as a counselor, and I'm sitting across and talking to these young men from eighteen years old all the way up to, some of them in there were sixty-five years old, they would say to me, "Pastor Mark, I just started taking out, taking medical marijuana for my illness. But it wasn't long before I became addicted to it, and it was controlling me. I lost my job. I lost my family. I started stealing in order to be able to buy my marijuana and other drugs." Some of them, as I talked to them, they grew up with their parents, had medical marijuana. And so their parents would leave it on the counter, and therefore, there was no control of that, and then they started using it. Many of my clients, as it was with me, as I spent fifteen years on drugs, I started out with pot. And I smoked pot for fifteen years, but then I started on cocaine and other things, and, and wound up with spending four years in prison for manufacturing methamphetamine. So I know all the ramifications of what it did to me, did to my family, and how it affected me in my thinking. But the city of San Diego really didn't plan or recognize is, who's going to take care of the addicts? So they didn't have the facilities there to do it. So they were depending on a Christian organization to take care of those things. Crime rate went up, increased homelessness.
Was that, was that the buzzer?
And so I am opposed to the expansion of medical marijuana.
Thank you very much. Yeah. I asked them, and they said it was okay. And we already voted on it for one item, so. Mark Stafford?
My name is Mark. I'm the pastor of Canyon Bible Church here in Verde Valley. I'm a small business owner as well, and I'm a resident of Cottonwood. I live right next door to the facility. It's literally on the other side of my fence. My wife is a teacher. She works in the school district. This is the first time I've been aware of a public hearing about the marijuana facility. So I did want to take advantage to come and speak my mind, not only as a pastor, but also as a resident of the neighborhood that the facility sits in. My neighborhood is opposed to this facility. My neighbors do not like it in their backyard, period. They don't like it, that it's there. We live on a peaceful street, on Beach Street, and we have now marijuana produced in our backyard. I have some deep concerns about expanding these services. I want to say that I agree with what Pastor Randy and with what Mark White has said before me. They are accurate in their estimation as far as how this affects our community socially and what I'm also seeing as a pastor. I have some additional concerns beyond those. Marijuana is linked to serious mental difficulties, including depression, violent behavior, anxiety, fits of rage, apathy, depression, and suicide. Marijuana has been documented to bring about sudden ADHD and ADD symptoms, especially in children. Studies have shown it has been linked to an increase in bronchitis, dementia, Alzheimer's, cancer, and long-term memory loss. It's also been linked to permanent decreases in IQ levels. All of those factors bring about both social and financial hardship to both family and communities at large. The medicinal benefits of today's marijuana are not thoroughly tested. Experts say, and listen to me, experts say that it's very naive to think that you can take a psychoactive compound, ingest it, and then expect that it would not cause permanent damage in your brain. The known consequences of marijuana use are tragic. Harvard studies have shown a link between today's more potent marijuana and both psychosis and schizophrenia in some patients. The potency of modern marijuana causes people to lose touch with reality. Overdoses of today's marijuana are not uncommon. These overdoses are leading to serious illness and emergency hospitalization. In both cases, the use of marijuana overwhelms hospital. I do not believe the additional income the marijuana industry will produce in Cottonwood will be worth the additional problems that it produces. I would rather see our city's economy based on an industry that we could all be proud of. I have to say, I am ashamed that we grow marijuana here. I'm ashamed that it's grown in my backyard. Well, not literally in my backyard, on the other side of the fence. And I'm ashamed that, as a community, that we're contributing to hurting so many families. I don't believe that expanding marijuana services in Cottonwood is in the best interest of our citizens or of our city. I oppose this measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
May I ask a question? Kind of just a question about the last comment?
Certainly.
I'm just curious, have you ever had any security issues or problems with people? Or any, for the most part, everybody I've ever spoken to doesn't even know it exists. And the only way they really hear about it is when there's some community outrage like this, or it's on the front of the paper because there's community concern. Have you ever had any, have you ever had any issues with the facility as it is today?
It's hard for us to know that as neighbors there because...
Well, it's a real simple question. I'm just curious, have there been police reports or...
Well, let me explain, because there's a brewery that sits next to them too, and we have had issues with that facility at large. How much of those are connected with the brewery? And how much, how many of those issues are connected with the marijuana plant? I'm uncertain of.
Okay, thank you. Just curious.
Okay. Elaine Brimner?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Boy, those seats get harder by the minute, I'll tell you that, members of the City Council. I didn't know I was coming here to really discuss marijuana growth. They're not selling marijuana out of that plant. And I've taken a tour of that plant. I happen to be a neighbor too, closer than this gentleman that just spoke. And they have a very good security system. They meet all of the codes. They were permitted to operate there. The City Council approved all of that to begin with. So this is a man who has a business, and like any other businessman, if it flourishes, he wants to expand. He's asking to make a reasonable expansion. I didn't think that this meeting was actually about the sale of marijuana or the use, because everyone that's spoken thus far, I could go down and say, "Well, look at me. Food's addictive, okay? Alcohol's addictive. Coca-Cola's very addictive. Tobacco's addictive. Prescribed narcotics by our medical facilities extremely addictive and destructive, okay? And they're not selling drugs, except through legal channels, according to the law." So this is, this is my, my opinion. Do you want a growing community? You want people employed? Do you want to expand and enhance the tax base? As far as I can see, and I'm a very close neighbor, two doors down, and two doors away. Never had any problem with anyone in that area. They're not people traveling up and down the street looking for that facility. It's very quiet. It's low-key. No one even knows it's there, you know? And as I mentioned, it meets all the security requirements dictated by the City Council, and I believe in the laws of the county, and the state, and every other law. And so if this man isn't permitted to, or his company, Cottonwood Agricultural Services, they'll take their business somewhere. You're not going to be able to stop what's happening in this world. I also want to say this, and I mean it with no disrespect, because it comes from my heart and soul. Jesus is also addictive. He's very addictive, and he helps those who have all of those weaknesses that I just discussed. Food, alcohol, Coca-Cola, any other kind of thing that human beings become addicted to. So I just want to say, they're good neighbors, and I think they shouldn't be treated with a double standard. It's a business wanting to expand their business. They're operating within the law. So that's my opinion, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mary Lee Fowler?
Thank you, Mayor Jones and Councilmembers. I'm the Director of MATFORC, and as the Director of MATFORC, my number one concern is kids and youth. And our goal is to prevent people from using substances. So I just want to tell you a little bit about what's happening with marijuana in Yavapai County. A few statistics from the Arizona Youth Survey, which is conducted by the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission. It asks eighth, tenth, and twelfth-grade students about their different substances and use. And so we know, and very sad to say, in Yavapai County, that our youth use of marijuana is above the state and the national average. We've had since two thousand and six a twenty percent increase of kids using marijuana from two thousand and six to two thousand and fourteen. With our twelfth-grade students, it's been a fifty percent increase over that same amount of time. We, I'm going to talk to you just a little bit about prevention science, because that's what's important to me and what we know about with preventing people from using substances. The first thing that we know is that use is linked to perception of risk. And when the, the people don't see a risk associated with a substance, that use goes up. So what's happening with our kids now with medical marijuana, and now looking at legalized marijuana, they don't associate a risk with using marijuana. When asked with the Arizona Youth Survey about their perception of risk, over fifty, or close to fifty percent of the kids said that they see no harm in regular use of marijuana on the two thousand and fourteen Arizona Youth Survey. When we asked them about just using marijuana, about seventy percent of the kids say they don't see a harm associated with it. We know from, there's a lot of scientific knowledge out there about the harms of marijuana, particularly to the adolescent brain. So that's very concerning to us, because as a perception of risk again goes down, use goes up. We also know that social norming is another thing that's associated with youth use. When a society says that something is socially acceptable, use goes up. And that's what's also happening in this current talk with medical and legalized marijuana. And the third thing that we know is when ease of access and supply is increased, use goes up. And that's exactly what's happening. If you look at the medical marijuana cards, the highest age bracket of people that have those cards are eighteen-to-thirty-year-olds. And we know that it's getting into the hands of kids. The Arizona Youth Survey asked the kids that say that they're regular users of marijuana where they get their marijuana, and in Yavapai County, seventeen percent of the kids say that they get it from a medical marijuana cardholder. That's why we're concerned. I care about the kids, and I really hope that you make the right decision with this, because we want to protect our children.
May I follow up on that one?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to, I did check the September report for the AZDHS Department of Health Services. And actually, the majority of users in the state right now, fifty-five percent, are forty-one and older. And the fastest increasing demographic of that is actually the fifty-one, fifty-one to eighty-one-plus age range. So while that was initially true, the eighteen-to-thirty-fours were the highest. That demographic is shifting significantly and quickly.
But it's still the highest. I looked at the same report, Jesse, and it was the eighteen-to-thirty-old is still the highest percentage, so, yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Forty-one to, forty-one and up is fifty-five percent of the mark.
Okay. Ivan Anderson?
Mayor Jones, City Council. My name is Ivan Anderson. I'm a member of MATFORC and a father of two, live here in Cottonwood. Being a member of MATFORC, I'm going to talk about pot. Well, I'm not. This is a planning and zoning issue, at least, is how I'm going to approach it tonight when I talk to you about this whole expansion of this business. I think Cottonwood, I think the council needs to ask yourself, what do you guys want to be known for? You've spent a lot of time, a lot of effort, and a lot of success becoming the heart of the Arizona wine country. Took a long time to get to that point. I moved here in nineteen ninety-nine. I saw the spike and all the success with the industry and everything with housing and all that. I saw it go down. Cottonwood, during the middle of all that, rebounded and became very successful with this whole promotion of being a wine center of the state. And it's worked, it's been a real positive benefit to the community. If we start expanding the, or the ability for marijuana producers to come here and have larger grows, this is not going to be the only one that shows up. We're going to get more. And the question you have to ask yourself is, what do you want to be known for? Do you want to be known for as the pot capital of Arizona or the heart of Arizona wine country? So I think you have the potential here to stop this right now and just say, "You guys, this is what you get. You get your ten thousand square feet or whatever it is. We're not going to expand it anymore." And you just, either they live with it, or they move, and it's up to them. But you have to figure out what's going to happen in five years. If you expand these, this facility and allow the grows to be bigger in the, in the city of Cottonwood or in the Verde Valley, I guess, in the city of Cottonwood, you will have the potential for more grows. And the potential for more grows can be a lot higher, because if they do legalize it in this state, you can bet on it, they're going to try and find a place to grow it. And they're going to come here, because they're going to say, "Hey, look at this one, it's pretty successful. They have a very pot-friendly community or council, or whatever you want to call it. And you're going to have more of it in our backyard." And I would say personally, you're better off promoting this than you are promoting marijuana. So I'll just leave it at that. So not in favor of changing the amendment.
Erin Mayberry? Mayberry? See, I did it again. Erin Mayberry.
Mayor, City Council. I wanted to just give you a little story about what I do every day. I work with little kids. Four-, five-, and six-year-olds actually know, or they think that they know what zombies are, right? I was listening in on a conversation the other day, of course, Halloween and all of that. And the kid said, one of them said, "I saw them. They're out in front of Walgreens. I saw the zombies." And it occurred to me that they are so affected by the things that they don't understand. And I thought about that, and I thought, you know, these kids are being told a message. They're being told a message that looking like a zombie is okay. They're being told a message that they're not safe, they don't feel safe. And we're, I feel that with the growth of the marijuana... And we're, I feel that with the growth of the marijuana issues that are happening around us, we're really not supporting the safety of our kids. I heard, you guys have heard lots of facts. You've heard lots of details about, and I'm sorry, I get very emotional about this because I can't look at five-year-olds and say, "It's okay because we're going to make some money on the other end of it. It's all right. It's okay. It's going to affect your life, the people in your life, the kids that you're growing up with, the families that are being ruined by marijuana use and by drug use and all kinds of substance abuse." You have a puzzled look on your face, Jesse.
I'm sorry. Were these five-year-olds, were the people actually dressed up like zombies for Halloween or something or were these five-year-olds?
No, I'm referring to...
The five-year-olds were...
They're seeing people that are on meth or that are homeless, that are affected by drug use.
Okay.
And they're relating them as zombies.
Okay.
Because they see that in their homes.
Just trying to clarify that. Thank you.
Yeah. So, I hope that you don't expand the growth.
Just so it's clear, I care about kids too. I'm going to be the unpopular guy in the room tonight. I love our kids. I volunteer my time at high school. I don't want kids doing drugs. I love kids. I hate to see kids put in the middle of disagreements and arguments. So, I would just clearly say, I like kids. I love kids. I can't get enough of kids. I'll do anything I can to help a kid. I've talked with Mary Lee several times and expressed to her that we have the same goal and that we don't want kids to get hurt. We don't want kids to do drugs. So, I'm not trying to be flippant. I was just really curious if they saw somebody in a costume or something. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that the message of sending the message to our community that it's about the bottom line, it's about making a buck is wrong.
Oh, Dr. C. And it's Dr. Leon Cata...
Catalica.
Catalica.
Thanks very much. Thanks for the opportunity to talk to all of you tonight. I'm a retired family physician. I moved here in 1999 from Pennsylvania and I've actually treated some of you folks and your families. My concern, of course, is children. I look at the newspaper and I see kids playing football, softball stars and remember them when they came in in diapers and their mothers were very concerned about their health at that time. So, I have a relationship that goes back for 16 years in this town and lots of kids that I treated then are now in high school and even older. So, my concern is children. More availability, more opportunity to use this stuff, they're going to do it. I have just a couple of things to say from a medical point of view. Some research recently has shown that 75 products were checked from cannabis dispensaries. I think this was done in Connecticut. The dispensaries were unaware that their products would be tested. Only 17% of these edible cannabis products were correctly labeled for their concentration of TNC, THC. 23% of the products underestimated and 60% of the products overestimated their THC levels. So, there's no real standardization in this industry. And one of the things you're going to do by expanding this property is expand the production of edibles in this facility. Now, if we can have strict regulation like you do with the FDA producing drugs and medications across the country, then maybe there's a possibility that this stuff will be useful. Also, two doctors from Yale University School of Medicine made a statement that for most conditions that qualify for medical marijuana use today, the evidence fails to meet the standards put up by the U.S. Food and Drug Administration. These doctors call for government support to conduct high-quality trials and until such trials are available, they suggest that it may be prudent to wait before widely adopting use of medical marijuana. And their statement was, perhaps it's time to place the horse back in front of the cart. So, all of this that I'm talking to you about tonight is a need for regulation of this industry in some fashion to standardize what they're using. And other statements in this article that I pulled off of Medscape show that use in glaucoma is almost negligible. Glacébo works better. There is some use in spasticity for multiple sclerosis. There is some use in chronic pain. That needs to be further investigated, but as far as Crohn's disease, hepatitis C, and all the other arrangements that they've made to use this or excuses, I should say, it has no effect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Casey Waldrop? And if anybody else wants to speak, just grab a form from the back and fill it out.
Good evening, council, mayor. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you guys for your time for coming out here today and speaking. I'm also a parent. I'm proud to say that my daughter was born here in the city of Cottonwood. It's a place that, I've been all over Arizona through Southern Arizona, Tucson, Phoenix, and this is a place that's actually made me feel the most at home as far as your county and or your city and just how friendly you guys are. And it really does have that small-town vibe and that's something that I really do appreciate about Cottonwood. A few things that have been mentioned here today is the access of the medicine. Now, in order for somebody to illegally obtain this medication, whether they have an ailment that is legitimate or not, they have to go through several state-licensed entities to do that. Not only do they have to obtain a recommendation from a state-licensed doctor, but they also have to go into a facility that licenses or that accepts that recommendation to accept that for the state and approve for the DHS. So, it's not that expanding our medical marijuana facility, our growth facility, is going to increase the availability to patients. I know a lot of patients and a lot of friends that are within the community that will not be able to obtain this medication because they are not in areas that it is available to them. So, it's not like anybody can just come into our facility and obtain medication. They do have to go into a state-licensed facility, which they've already had to pass two or three different checkpoints to get to that point. So, the danger of that is not something that is within our site and it's not even really a topic that should be brought up today. What we're talking about is the expanding of a facility. We have no danger. We've never had any issues with our facility. The only alarm that we've ever had go off on our facility was because a juniper branch fell over and went over one of our top roof beams. So, that is the extent of the danger that we have possessed to this community. There were also some other incidents that happened on the property, but there were other businesses and you can talk to the police chief and other law enforcement officers and they will verify that those had nothing to do, any way, shape, or form, with our facility or with anything that we do stand for as far as Cottonwood Agricultural Services goes. Thank you very much for your time. If you have any questions, we will be available.
Thank you. Jennifer Gotti? Or Goat? Gotei?
Gotei.
Gotei, okay.
Good evening. My name's Jennifer Gotei. I am a single mother with four children. I do not use marijuana, but I work in the industry. It's, I don't have a college education. I never could afford to do that. I've been supporting my children by myself for most of their lives. I've worked in bars and restaurants and really haven't had a lot of quality time with them until I started working in the marijuana industry. It allows me to pay my bills. It allows me to provide for them without access or welfare. I can totally support them on my income. Medical marijuana creates jobs and that's really important in a small-town community like this. So, thank you.
Okay.
Are we all through the list?
Yes.
Mr. Downing, I represent Cottonwood Agricultural Services. I'm here to answer any questions the council or the city staff or any members of the audience might have. I was a former prosecutor, epistemology major, Boston University. Wholeheartedly about the pursuit of truth. Met many members of Matforce outside. I think we have a lot in common on certain issues. This is not an issue about the grand debate of marijuana. This is a simple land use issue. This is a simple zoning issue. This is an economic issue. Nobody's looking to turn Cottonwood into the capital of marijuana. The capital of marijuana production in Arizona is Phoenix. There's 30-plus facilities there. There's facilities in counties and cities across Arizona and those jurisdictions are benefiting from the economic impact of the cultivation of marijuana. The whole notion that this is going to somehow increase consumption, that's totally off-base. This is a production facility that's going to produce a product similar to the production facilities in Prescott or other places that's actually going to be sold, all the marijuana from this facility is going to be sold in Tucson. There's no correlation whatsoever. I wish I could take every single person from Matforce and any single person who wants to understand the industry of cannabis and how things are changing and how things can be regulated from a seed-to-sale model and how accountable and safe it can be and walk with me. I will take anyone, anywhere across the state, to any conference, anywhere in the United States, and I'm available at all times to see this new world. Again, I was a prosecutor. I see this from a law enforcement perspective. I see this from a citizen of Arizona. I'm a native of Arizona as well. This has plenty of benefits and I want to apologize to the pastor because we've never met before, but we do share some of the same problems. There's a lot of rowdy behavior. There's a lot of parties. There's people who urinate on the fences. Those are all a result of that brewery. So, if the council wants to sit down and discuss how we can eliminate the problems in the neighborhood, we should look at the brewery. But we're not. We're a very peaceful facility. We have five businessmen operating. I think we have an accountant, an engineer, a smoothie person. They're operating, we share a wall with them right now and they're operating successfully, very peacefully. We create very little impact on the community except for economic benefit and jobs. So, I look forward to working with you, pastor, on how we can do something about the issues that are being caused by that brewery. We share the same concerns and I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Downing, the council? Okay. Thank you very much. And Mr. Kyler, did you want to speak tonight because the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote on this issue?
Thank you, mayor. I'm a little stiff from sitting. Ed Kyler, I came tonight as chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission to explain to council why we requested approval for this amendment to the building code, zoning code. We hacked this over maybe two or three meetings in a row. We never had any input from anybody in the public prior to this as we were doing it except for two gentlemen who are part of the marijuana-growing company. They were the only ones that came to put in any input. None of the rest of the citizens did. We never heard from anybody. So, we have to assume that there was no objections. We talked about it. We discussed it quite heavily, more than we do some things, and based on a six-to-one vote, we recommended approval to council. And we came to that conclusion because we, it was merely a building size that we were asked to take a look at. Had nothing to do with what was being done within it or on the outside of it. Nowhere in our zoning code do we limit area square footage for any business that has come into Cottonwood. Walmart had theirs approved 200,000 square feet. And we approved these buildings and the only thing we're interested in, in the design review part of it, is the outside. This is a legitimate business under Arizona law. We felt there was an obligation and we could not deter them from expanding their business. One thing we thought of was the potential for civil suit. If we said no, left it the way it was, we don't regulate anybody else. So, in this case, we decided we would do the, eliminate the 10,000 square feet and make it just. Now, if I'd heard some of this, or we had heard some of these other people, and I know that there's going to be a few more behind me, if we had heard from these people when we were having our meetings about this, we might not be here tonight. So, we need to get the public more involved in what the Planning and Zoning Commission does. Our agenda's available on the city website, just like everybody, the other commissions and the council, and we'd love to see people at the meetings. But nobody was there. We did what we thought was right and we amended it. It's merely an amendment to the code that eliminates 10,000 square feet and leaves it out there. So, that's the reason we recommended approval. Any questions from anybody?
Questions?
Pretty clear.
Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Okay. Thank you, mayor.
You're welcome. Okay. So, anybody else want to speak? If not, council discussion?
I suppose I'll lead off.
Okay.
Before we get too far, I'll go ahead and address, yes, I do work next to the space that these guys are in, so there will clear up any question of our relationship. I simply work next to them in the building. I work next to them for, I wouldn't know they were there. And so, I worked next to them since their inception. Hasn't ever been a problem. And as we were going, this really came to me really when we were going through our budget process and we're sitting here gnashing our teeth about our budget being so tight and we're trying to help other people, you know, we're trying to divvy up money in the community for the people that could really use it, like Elaine's Meals on Wheels program and, you know, and fighting on trying to, hey, can we fund a school resource officer so we can actually help kids in high school or, you know, at the middle school? And we're trying to bounce things around like that. And as I'm sitting in my office one day, I realized, you know, here we are searching for industry, for jobs, for tax base, and right over my shoulder is whether or not you like, you agree with it. It is a legal thing in the state. It is a successful industry that has potential. It is environmentally friendly and it is law. I mean, it's the state of, it's the law in our state. Now, I know the refrain I'm going to get is that, "Well, our county and our city didn't vote for it." And that might be, perhaps, some of us probably did vote for it. However, right now, regardless of who voted for it or against it, there are around 1,250 cardholders in the northeast portion of Yavapai County. It's actually like one of the, if you look at the little map they have on the site, it's the bright red spot to the north where there's the majority of people, you know, in that rate. I believe if I understand the numbers correctly, it's almost 2% of the totals, the total state cardholders are in northeast Yavapai County and Yavapai County proper to the east, to the west, which would include Baghdad, I think. Then that's all on the website and can be verified. So, while maybe everybody here didn't vote for it, there are about 11 or 12, about 1,250 people that rely on it, whether or not you feel they legitimately rely on it, they've gone through the process, they are legal cardholders. It's a legal industry in the state. And you roll back and you look at it and you say, you know, fully 40% of the cardholders are in the 40% statewide are 51-years-plus. I know it's very nice to focus on the 18 to 30-year-old range, but that's changing quickly. You can watch it. You can look at it. It's happening. So, that really is kind of the basis there. This is legal. It's not illegal. We are not, I don't think we are in a position right now to litigate whether or not it's good or bad, right or wrong. It's legal. We're not here to litigate future legalization issues. That's up to the voters of the state and I'm sure that everybody has their methods for influencing the voters via their billboards and signs and ads and that's a larger battle we can all face and that we can all say our pardon at the ballot box like we're supposed to. As far as being like the capital, it's too late as being the capital. There are, there's three large growth facilities in Chino Valley. I know there is a desire to add a fourth and I know there was some opposition to that. There are large, we're talking 20 and 40-acre sections going in around Wilcox, up in Kingman. We're not going to be the capital. We're not going to be the heart of Arizona weed country. It's not going to happen. We just have some guys that like the community and want to provide a service for people who need it legally. And that rolls over to demand. Now, the question there is demand. So, I did some basic math. If I look at the total number of cardholders in our CHAW, which is our Community Health Assessment Area, and if it seems like I know a little bit about it, it's because I've tried to research. If all 1,250 patients in our area on this side of the mountain were to purchase their full allotment of five ounces, you're allowed two and a half ounces of product every two weeks, so you could get a total of five ounces a month. The majority of people may not do that, but some people with certain conditions... The majority of people may not do that, but some people with certain conditions may require that. But if all those people bought their maximum amount, they have a requirement, they would need approximately 390 pounds of marijuana. At the current estimated output for like the 10,000-square-foot space, there's a lot of numbers in the industry about what, you know, yields per square foot and all those fun things. So by looking at the numbers that, you know, at a 10,000-square-foot location or limit size cap, you could produce between 150 and 175 pounds a month. So I think that that clearly indicates that there is a demand for that product that can't be met by the limited space. What they're looking to do is simply increase their occupation of an existing building at this point, given the market, and approximately, and they may not use all 16,000 square-foot in-envelope building space, and some of that will probably remain offices and another 14,800 square feet might be able to be used for growing in a, you know, a total of the 10,000 square feet. So if they were able to do that, they could actually yield around 250 pounds a month, which would be closer to the demand that we have at that, at our dispensary. So what I'm getting at is they're not doing this to make extra, they're doing it to meet the current demand of a legal industry in the state of Arizona. And so they're simply trying to conduct a good business. Whether or not you agree with the business they're conducting is a personal decision. So roll that back. I really don't want to be seen as trying to sell our children out for money, but when budget season comes, there's not really, the budget don't care. It takes money. And the economic bottom line for this, I worked, I contacted Kimber Lanning at Local First and tried to get an idea. I went through our Economic Development Office first and didn't really get any feedback. I got a call back from the Yavapai County Economic, Yavapai College Economic Development Office and they're going to get back to me later. They were too pressed for time and couldn't get to it. I talked, you know, I looked everywhere I could for the last two weeks for this. I finally got with Kimber Lanning from Local First Arizona, who's a large proponent of local industry and local businesses. And they said that one full-time employee in our economy would basically push back $28,800 to the city's economy through taxes and wages, including direct spending, indirect and induced spending. Now, these are real preliminary numbers because it was such a tight timetable and it's not like anybody ever researches this industry completely because it's so stigmatized. So if we go to the number of 20 employees, which the initial estimate, after the initial build-out, was going to be 15 to 20 employees if I understand correctly from the last meeting. If we look at 20 employees, we would be putting $576,000 annually in economic benefit back into the city and all of its citizens. This doesn't just go back into the people that are medical marijuana patients. If you look at it that way, this is the medical marijuana industry redistributing $576,000 to every, amongst all the citizens of the city of Cottonwood. So, you know, I know it will be discounted. I know that after the last meeting, when they got up and said, we'll have 14 to 20 employees, the next person that got up and spoke discounted it down to six or seven employees. But, you know, either way, the numbers they're looking at are the, about, you know, up to 20 initially. The other thing that's to be considered is that there's going to be a capital investment here. And that's part of the reason this has been taking place is they were getting ready to dump about a million dollars into this building of capital investment. If you take that capital investment of almost a million dollars and run that through the four-times multiplier for standard spending in locality, that would actually yield almost $4 million in indirect-induced and enhanced spending back into the city right off the bat. I mean, I believe the contractor that will be heading that up is sitting in the audience tonight. And they're just kind of sitting around waiting for us to make this decision to allow a legal business to do a legal business. I've heard a lot of concerns about quality-of-life impacts. I've gone through every monthly report I've received since the medical marijuana came about and we get, as council, you get a monthly report with all the police reports and the fire reports and they give a summary and I went through all those and there hasn't been any appreciable, there hasn't been any positive upward trend. If anything, it was slightly downward, but it's kind of hard to delve because of the data points. There's been a slight downward decrease in part, I think it's, is it Section 2 or Part 2 crimes specifically related to drugs, per the reports I get every month. So I, you know, that tells me that we haven't seen this crazy boom of marijuana or arrests for drugs specifically, you know, in that same timeframe. So I kind of look at that. You know, I don't believe there's been any disruptions, disputes, problems, disputes, any, I don't believe the police have been called for any significant reason. I know they've been offered and invited the chance to tour the facility. I know our police department, or I'm sorry, our fire department has toured the facility multiple times, both for professional, you know, for professional reasons. But the council has been allowed to tour the facility. Anybody that would like to, I believe Dimitri will, Mr. Downing would allow you to, you know, he'll show anybody that wants to look. They're not trying to hide anything. Elaine came over, I saw her walking through one day on her tour and it hasn't been a bad thing. So really, you know, I don't want this to really turn into the larger litigation of the state of marijuana. I would like this to keep this, you know, I don't really want to know if we're going to have to rely, if we as a city are going to set our economic policy and our policies based on the pleasures of Matforce per se. You know, Matforce says it's bad, don't do it, so then we're going to basically discount anything else. I just think that I would like to set our policies as the council of the city and take everybody's concerns into account, but also temper those with the fact that we are responsible to the citizens of the city. And if we can figure out a way to make life better for everybody, I think that's a positive thing and that's where I would like to see it go. And then I can actually stop thinking about it for a while because, you know, I am obviously somewhat emotional in this because, you know, the last time we had this meeting, I was asked what my relationship with the facility was and Mr. Downing, and I believe I said my relationship is to the citizens of this valley. I don't have any desire to make anybody use it, to let anybody that shouldn't use it, use it, to allow anybody underage to get a hold of it. And I just think that we could get a lot more out of this if we work together rather than in opposition. And that is going to be where I leave it for now. There are a lot, you know, this is a complex issue and it's not simple and I've said way too much already, but I just want to make it clear that this is just a simple, aside from all the emotional other issues with this, this is a simple zoning issue of allowing a legal business to conduct itself and to benefit every citizen of the city of Cottonwood regardless of their feelings or thoughts on the substance at hand. And I'll leave it at that for now.
Mr. Downing?
Yes.
I happen to agree with you. You pretty much covered every base completely and thoroughly. And I think there is a lot of confusion going on when people talk about this issue between legal and illegal, you know, and there's still a, when you go for a card, as was explained, there are certain procedures to follow. And I'm not going to argue with people who have certain maladies who feel that this is very beneficial to them, you know. And also, we hear a lot of this PTSD and people swear that marijuana has, you know...
There's actually going to be a, there's actually, I'm sorry, there's actually going to be a federally-approved efficacy study taking place for that down in Scottsdale very soon.
Okay. And recently, at some meetings in the Phoenix area, they had a group of former NFL players, you know, speaking about the impacts from their careers and the fact that many of them feel that the marijuana has eased their pain and their injuries and such. So there is a legitimate reason for it, you know. Anything can be abused, obviously. I don't care what it is, you know, you can abuse it. You can abuse wine. We're the wine center of the valley. You abuse wine, I mean, it can be done. Elaine pointed out, you know, we've used a lot of things, you know, from, well, I'm there with you, you know, food, candy, you name it. There are those abuses. So there are people with addictive personalities, I understand. But I agree with you and it is a zoning issue. I believe that this business is a legitimate business and has the right to expand. And I know I questioned you on that, you know, when we first talked about this.
Sure.
And initially, I had to give it some thought, you know. But there isn't a businessman around that isn't going to open a business and want to expand the business, you know. And people don't go into business to lose money. They go into business to make money. So I think there's a little bit of resentment sometimes when I talk to people about this industry. They say, well, look at all this money. Well, you don't go into business to lose money. You go into it to make money. So anyway, I do agree with you. I appreciate your comments and your research. Appreciate Mr. Kyler looking at this as a zoning issue. And like you said, I think I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Garrison?
I'll go next. I'm really conflicted with this agenda item and I really wish we hadn't had two such emotionally-charged topics on the same agenda the same night. It's just, it's a little hard to stay this focused on things this deep for this length of time and I appreciate that you've stuck around to share your opinions on it because, as you can tell, we're all conflicted at some point on how we deal with this. I made comments in the last work session that I saw this as a zoning issue. This, you know, we have Mr. Scully sitting here, we have Mr. Kyler sitting here. They're not the Department of Health, they're Department of Zoning. And so that's how it was brought to us. This is about economic development and I'm a huge proponent of economic development. I love bringing jobs into the city. The problem in the conflict with me becomes the perception that somehow by us moving forward with taking restrictions off of a businessman to increase or enlarge his operation, whether you consider the product that he turns out to be viable or valuable for your community or legal or non-legal, that's what we're supposed to do as a council. We're supposed to grow our economy. We're supposed to take and bring jobs in, bring money in. This is money that's coming into the community and not money that's leaving the community and going elsewhere. But as a council, somehow by us approving this ordinance, we're passing on the perception to our community that we're somehow socially promoting its use and that couldn't be further from the truth. You know, part of this original amendment that was, ordinance amendment that was brought to us had a whole bunch of loosening's on the dispensaries. I questioned that. Nobody was here from the industry that was selling it, that had any want to participate in this discussion. The council backed removing that from the ordinance and it no longer is part of the ordinance. That's the selling part. This is the growing part. I have property right next door to this facility. My neighbors are here in this room. If I didn't know that facility was there, I wouldn't know that facility is there. It's, it is, it doesn't exist except because we say it exists there. So I don't know. I'm having a real hard time with this because I think we're being asked to do one thing, but whatever decision we make is going to be seen as a lose-lose for us. I don't think we've been given a winning way to get out of this because we're either not supporting the kids in our community or we're not supporting business. And I think every one of us sitting up here supports both of those. So I do appreciate that you came and shared your opinion, though.
So, Swayne, did you want to share your thoughts?
After the last meeting we had, Ms. Bremner accused me of not supporting economic development or jobs in Cottonwood. And so I want to publicly tell her that if anybody that knows me knows different than that. I'm a big proponent of economic development, jobs in Cottonwood and our youth and that's the main reason I got on the council 20 some-odd years ago because all of my kids had to leave Arizona when they got out of high school to find jobs. They all went in the military, all but one. One is still in the military. My problem, I agree with all the people that are opposed to this and for all the reasons they're opposed to it. I'm also opposed to it. The one part with me, and it's a really weak argument, I know the voters of Arizona voted it in. I know the council approved the building to start with, but it was because it was a planning and zoning issue back then also. But it is, it's a planning and zoning issue on an illegal operation by the feds. The feds say it's illegal and I feel that the feds, they take precedence over what the people in Arizona voted in. We could also have porn businesses here in Cottonwood that might want to expand. We don't allow them in here. We could have had, we had lap dancers that wanted to come into a certain barn. We got wind of it and we wrote an ordinance so that we don't have that kind of activity in our community. And at that point, it was because of the children. We didn't want the children to be exposed to stuff like that. And adult stores and different places that the council has taken a stand. And I realize this is legal to some, it's illegal to me. In my opinion, it's totally illegal. I've got a brother-in-law, a grandson-in-law that has a brother that came back from Iraq and he has PTSD terribly. He's got a dog now that helps him out. They put him on marijuana and for two and a half years, he was useless. He dropped out of college, lost his home, he lost his marriage, he lost his family. He got, he sought help and he got off of the marijuana. He's back in college. He's got a job as a surveyor, engineer. He got his degree in college. So I've seen that end of it too. You can come off of it with some help, but for two and a half years, it cost him everything that he worked for all of his life. And he's still not well. He still has the help, the dog, and the dog is very in tune to when he is going through his PTSD episodes. I watched it one day when he was visiting with me and it's not pleasant to watch, but a dog took him out of it, a dog brought him out of it, not drugs. The drugs got him deeper and deeper and deeper into it. The marijuana got him deeper into it. I had Crohn's disease. I could have gotten a card. I was stubborn. I don't take drugs. And so then I decided to control my Crohn's with diet and my Crohn's disappeared. I didn't, I could have gotten marijuana, I could have been all doped up. What we want in this town is a lot of people that are drugged up on, no matter what, whether it's prescription, whether it's marijuana or not. It's making it harder for employers to get employees that can pass the drug test. So there's a multiple amount of reasons. Like I keep hearing, it's a planning and zoning issue. I appreciate what planning and zoning did. They've worked really, really hard on this and so's the council. But for all those reasons, I just cannot, in my own mind and in my own heart, go along with what planning is, what we've done with the planning and zoning issue on this. And Jesse has a great argument. Jesse and I are friends. We'll always be friends. We have a disagreement on this, but we leave it at that front door. So hopefully, everybody else in here can do that when they leave here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alinsky, did you want to?
Sure. Yeah, I'll just keep it short and sweet because everybody said everything already. And the pros and cons that we heard tonight and that we heard at the last meeting that we've been talking about throughout the months really are the same deliberations that we went through at the ballot box as a state. And the state approved marijuana for medical use. So when that initiative turned into law, the city of Cottonwood was forward-thinking and we decided to allow for a cultivation facility within city of Cottonwood because that was a safer way to regulate the use of medical marijuana because otherwise, folks could grow it in their backyard or closets or wherever they wanted to. So from a law enforcement perspective, it seemed to make better sense to allow for a grow facility here in Cottonwood and I think the city did a good job with that. So anyway, what we're doing now is really just reacting to the law, which is in place. And, you know, we don't restrict any of the wineries that we have in town, the wine tasting rooms, we don't restrict them on size and so I look... wine tasting rooms, we don't restrict them on size, and so I, I look at this as really the same issue, why would we restrict another business, uh, businesses, square footage? We have a business that wants to expand, so I, I see no reason why we shouldn't allow that to happen. What I don't like to see happening is that this meeting has turned into a forum where we are advocating or not advocating marijuana use. Again, I see it as, as really a separate issue, um, and I'd, I'd like to keep it at that.
So, um, I just have a question from, I guess, our city attorney, and I, I'm sorry I don't know this, but taxes on this product, does the city benefit from taxes?
If, if at all, I think, from, from the dispensary side, um, but-
But not the growth side?
Only, um, only indirectly, I think, um, on the, on the cultivation side.
So, as America moves forward with this marijuana issue, um, I predict that there will be a need for programs, um, for youth and, like, the DARE program, and for, um, enforcement, and also for, um, therapy. So, my, well, I'm getting into, though, I'm getting into the, it's, it's a zoning issue really, is what it is, but I was just wondering, you know, if, if this is passed, whether there would be any funds to help social programs, is what I, I guess my aunt, but not necessarily, because if we, if the facility grows, we would, it wouldn't necessarily be providing mer, medical marijuana just for, and Jesse probably can answer most of these questions because he studied so much, but, um, there's, I mean, if there's more grown here in our area, it'll go to other towns, is that how it works?
I believe there's a, between, I believe there can be wholesale sales between dispensaries and their cultivation sites. So, if one dispensary or a cul, and Mr. Downing probably has a lot more background on this, but yeah, between like, the cultivation site and the dispensary, they're sort of, uh, affiliated via licensure, so they would actually sell wholesale, and I think they can also wholesale between separate dispensaries. So if there was, if they don't have enough here at this dispensary, or this cultivation site, they could get some from another space, or if we had, if they have a good month and there's too much, they can sell it to another dispensary. Um, and that, actually, this topic was brought up, and I'm not sure of the specifics of it, because the information was, this is still some, kind of a new thing, but the information was that I believe, and Mr. Downing might have a better handle on this, a city may be able to actually see about, um, putting on a wholesale tax, uh, might be able to tax the wholesale ch, sales. I'm not sure about that, but that would, might address your concern more so with that. I don't know about the, the loophole on that, but, um, really, though, I think, you know, we'll end up getting, what we'd actually, the more that they would have to make, the more employees they have, the more indirect, direct, and, and effective spending is gonna come right back into the city by people living here, buying houses, renting, paying taxes and sales taxes. So, it, it's, it's a, it's a, you know, as it grows, if we have more employees and more people, more citizens working, the money comes back that way as well, not just from the wholesale exchange.
Okay, so-
I might've muddied that a bit, and please correct me if I'm wrong.
Do you have any comments on that, Mr. Down, Downing?
The, uh, so this production facility is attached to, um, a dispensary in Morana. I, I can't explain in five minutes or in an hour-
Where the product goes.
-how complicated the system and the industry is set up in Arizona, but basically, the more that's produced here, it will be shipped to other places. The Yavapai dispensary is allowed to purchase wholesale in a transaction that the public never sees, from this cultivation facility to the Yavapai dispensary, where it's taxed, or, you know, here in, in, in Cottonwood. Um, I could spend hours on this. Just to let you know, we, we're the ones who put on, we're about education in this industry. We put on that conference. We held a career fair for three hundred to five hundred people in the Phoenix market. The Phoenix Business Journal called it innovative visionary, and I wanted to share with them that there's jobs out there in Cottonwood as well. Um, but I, I'm here to help. No one probably in this state knows more about this industry than I do, and I make myself available to the city attorney, the city manager, and anyone for any questions, and we hope to be residents here.
So wholesale, taxes?
Wholesale. Well, if I may be frank, what's probably going to happen is the adult use will probably pass in two thousand sixteen. At that point, the city of Cottonwood's gonna have to come through with another, an entire new ordinance drafted to regulate, uh, what will be referred to as adult-use marijuana ordinance regarding public zoning, regarding whole lot issues. At that time, we could work with the council as to in, a way to institute some sort of fees or taxes in a number of different capacities that the city of council could, uh, that, that, that the, the, uh, city of Cottonwood could benefit from, including taxing our, our facility, because at that point, the facility will probably be, you know, operating with thirty to forty employees, um, if it passes, and, uh, we wouldn't mind at that point making sure that there's some sort of fixed revenue return. Uh, I don't see why not, it's rational.
That's just my train of thought, that it's really going to be up to the voters, um, and it's not gonna be up to the city council as to whether it's legalized, so I'm thinking if the voters of Arizona do legalize it for recreational use, you know, we will be impacted as everyone here tonight has expressed, and so, how do we have the funds? Because, you know, they talk about Colorado, what is it? This was forty-five million dollars, and then it was seventy or something, seventy-five million? Really, that's a drop in the bucket.
All right, well, they're actually voting, I think, at this election today, they're actually voting on a mechanism where act, the, the citizens of Colorado are actually gonna start getting tax refunds, because they're having to redistribute, they collected too much money, and they're having to redistribute it back to the citizens. That's going through there, so-
That sounds like Alaska, huh?
If, if I may, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
This ordinance wasn't really well thought through, because this industry didn't exist when it was passed through as a model ordinance in Arizona, legacy and towns-
It was hard to think, I, I was hard to be knowledgeable when everything was new.
But, but now we have a tremendous amount of data, information, and firsthand knowledge about how this industry works, and we can share that information with councils such as yours. We can pass on good information so that when this council is guided by the staff to produce sometime next year, an ordinance in, in, in anticipation of the potential of this passing, this council should be prepared for all the passable ramifications, including the possibility of benefiting from it economically, and I'm here to provide that information, not just the Cottonwood, but anywhere in the state of Arizona, because it's important that this time, as this ordinance comes through, it's thought through in a very intelligent manner, and it takes into concern all of the concerns of the residents of each jurisdiction, and we can help with that, including, uh, how to acquire finances and taxes and fees from any potential adult-use market.
Thank you. Um, so, we do have, anybody, council wanna comment? We do have another, Scott Mayberry would like to speak.
Good evening, I'm gonna make this short.
Three minutes.
Another Mayberry. Um, I'm the Director of Juvenile Court Services for the county, and I was back there contemplating, it is a zoning issue, and, you know, trying to frame my thoughts around that, and that's, that's what's before you guys, it's a zoning issue, and, and I'm not here to debate marijuana pros and cons, we all know that, we've been through it. Um, my business in the juvenile court, I deal with these kids every day, not my intent to talk about marijuana, um, but I do think that as leaders of this community, it is our job to set the tone for our communities, and if you're on the fence, that may be something you wanna think about. Um, I can tell you that we're losing the battle of mixed messages to our kids, and this could be a community that we set a message, and this is a message that's being sent, and I think even Jesse would agree, that it's a mi, mixed message battle across the boards with all of our kids right now, and that's what we're losing. So, um, I would just leave you with that. Um, our, my, uh, department's vision statement is influencing positive change, and when I, when I'm up against these type of decisions, um, economic, what's good for the department, what's good for the employees, I have to come back to those three words about influencing positive change, and I think that's something maybe you guys can come back to, is, is it, you know, based on your decision, will your dis, decision influence positive change for this community? So, I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Any other comments from?
I just, I wanna talk, I think we're, we're talking around a, a larger issue of substance abuse, and I, I don't wanna discredit any of the efforts that Matt Force has made, or law enforcement's made in our community to fight substance abuse. We've been doing it really well as a, as a unified community, and I think we will continue to do, uh, you know, to fight the efforts against substance abuse. Uh, I just, I, I just didn't want this to become a forum, to have that discussion, because I, I really see it as, as being quite separate, as I said earlier, but I, I would agree that there are definitely mixed messages, uh, that are being sent across the community, and it's, it's, it's just a much larger, substance abuse is a much larger issue, and so I, um, I, you know, I wasn't, I wasn't in favor of becoming the wine capital of Arizona, I, I didn't think that message fit our community, but it, we are now, and that's, in my mind, sending mixed messages. I think, you know, I and many others don't see much difference between, uh, the harmful effects of, should I shut up? I, I, I and many others don't see the difference between the harmful effects of, of alcohol being any different than the harmful effects of marijuana. They, in my mind, they are one and the same, they're equally as harmful, um, so that, you know, we are sending mixed messages, but hopefully we can get together and, and really try to hammer out, uh, ways to combat substance abuse in our community. I just don't want this to get in the hands of kids. I, I don't want people abusing marijuana the same as I don't want them abusing, uh, prescription meds, or any other substance that can lead to, uh, all the terrible things that we've talked about tonight. So, again, I think at least we can all, we can all agree on that.
Yeah, and it's, it's, um, it's just difficult, you know? We all could wish that there was no substance abuse, and people are working every day, Matt Force and everybody, to try to alleviate the challenges of that, and we all know, no matter what we do tonight, kids are gonna get it, and that's sad. I mean, it is accessible now, and it was accessible before we passed the Medical Marijuana Act, um, before the citizens did. And my thoughts are, you know, whether we expand it or not, it's going to be grown, and we can have some control over that when it's in our city, and we, if it goes to another town, we will not have any say or any control over what happens, and in the future, there may be times that we want more control over it. So it's, it's just really, it's a no-win decision, because it, it's about fifty-fifty in the community, from what I've heard, and it's not gonna be popular no matter what, what is voted.
Just time for a motion, Madam Mayor?
I'd like, I'd like to make the motion.
I was, I was gonna say, I think-
I, I, and I always say, I did not get elected to get re-elected. I'm here to do my best for the city. I move to approve ordinance number six-one-six, amending the city of Cottonwood zoning ordinance, section three-oh-eight, medical marijuana facilities, thereby deleting the maximum size specified for cultivation and infusion facilities, deleting the minimum distance required between medical marijuana facilities, and adding additional options for infusion kitchens.
Second.
So, Mr. Downing made the motion, Mr. Hadiggy seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Fine? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Do you need, do you need a hand raise, or you got all of that?
I'll raise both of them. Aye. No, absolutely not.
Okay, so, um-
Of course, I'll give you a high five on both.
Okay. So that is ordinance number six-one-six. Please read ordinance six-one-six by title only.
Ordinance number six-one-six is ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending section three-oh-eight, medical marijuana facilities, subsection C, three medical marijuana cultivation facilities and medical marijuana occasion facilities of the city's zoning ordinance.
Okay, moving on to the next item.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I wanna excuse myself, I, I may, it's a way past.
Okay. So the consent agenda, so please mark the, um, record to show that Councilmember Hadiggy must leave right now. The consent agenda, the following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council, and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
I move to approve the consent, oh, sorry.
I, I'm gonna have to, um, declare a conflict with item number two.
Okay, so we'll pull item number two for discussion. So would you go ahead and, um, make the motion on item one?
Do you need to discuss it, or you're just conflicted on it?
I can't vote on two, so I would like to pull two from the consent agenda.
I approve the consent agenda, item number one.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Downing made the motion, Mr. Ilinski seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll move to approve the person transfer liquor license application for Brian J. Webb, applicant for the state bar located at ten forty-eight North Main Street.
Okay, and we do, we do have a quorum, so we're okay.
Um, may, may I make a brief public comment on that? I'm Brian J. Webb.
Yes, would you please come up to the lectern?
Uh, good evening, Ms. Mayor and council members. Uh, my name's Brian Webb, I am the proprietor of the state bar. Um, we are an all-Arizona beer and wine bar, um, with a location in Flagstaff, Arizona. Um, we've been open for about two years. Um, we are a, a great, um, community citizen, um, we've done fundraisers for, um, you know, various charitable causes, for fallen officers, we're actually kind of a favorite hangout of police officers. Um, you know, the only time police officers are at our establishment, they're hanging out with their friends, they're coming in for a drink when they're not working. Um, and, uh, so we consider ourselves, um, good corporate citizens, you know, along with the, the subjects that have been discussed tonight about bringing economic development. Um, I'm coming here to, to build my business. Today, I signed a lease, um, for, uh, for a house down here. Um, I'm a lawyer, uh, I've been with a nonprofit for about six years, I'm starting my own law firm down here, so I signed a lease today for starting my own law firm, hopefully not too presumptuously, signed a lease for a place to live, planning to open my bar here as well. Um, and, uh, we, we consider ourselves the, um, this, the central purveyor of Arizona beer and wine. Arizona has about ninety wineries and about seventy breweries, um, and we sell all Arizona-made products all the time, and so, um, you know, I'm here to ask for, uh, for your support in voting in favor of, uh, the approval of our liquor license. Um, we'll be right down here at the, uh, the end of Main Street, um, right next to Bachi. Um, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those, but otherwise, we just, um, ask for your, uh, approval of our, um, beer and wine liquor license. Thank you.
You're welcome. So you said you're an attorney?
I am, that's right, so there's, the name is a play on words.
But you're opening up the state bar, so I, okay.
Yeah, the name's a play on words, all the beer and wines are made in the state, and-
I didn't know if you were, like, kidding, or, you know?
No, I, yeah, I, I am definitely a lawyer. I, I graduated, uh, I got a biology degree from ASU in 'oh-six, and I got my law degree from ASU in 'oh-nine.
Okay, well, congratulations.
If we drive down the street, we could actually say we're passing the state bar?
Yes, yes.
Well, it's interesting to see that you're an entrepreneur also, and, um, a businessman, so congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Welcome to Cottonwood.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And, we didn't vote-
There was a motion, there was a second.
There was a motion? Did you make it, Jesse?
I, I motioned to approve the number one on the consent agenda.
Okay, number two, we haven't voted on yet, so I would entertain a motion, we have four people here, so we have a quorum.
I did make a motion.
You did?
On number two, yes.
Okay, so-
Second.
Okay, so Mr. Ilinski made the motion, Mr. Downing seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Welcome to Cottonwood.
Yes. Okay, um, item eleven is new business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Development and assurance agreement with Virtual Reality Enterprises LLC for continued development of the Mesquite Hills subdivision.
Mayor?
Yes.
I believe I get to call a conflict on that?
Okay, so please note the record.
Affiliated with that.
Okay. So, I'm not on that page, who is rep, who is, um, going to present this?
Madame Mayor, I'll take that one.
You're doing it, okay, there you are. Yes, I see you now.
Madam Mayor and council, we have discussed this before and the council, this is a development project that began in the mid-2000s that the council approved. It's a large, in round numbers, about 600 residential units at build-out. And the project was designed to be phased in three phases. And the first phase was platted and the final plat was approved and recorded. And then the Great Recession hit and the project stalled. And so now the project is under new ownership. And we have discussed this in the, in the context previously of the application of the Hillside Development Ordinance, which was adopted in 2011 after this project was approved and the first phase platted and recorded. This agreement, the assurances for the completion of the first phase were released after the completion of the first half of the first phase. And when the project came back, it became apparent to us that we had to go back and obtain new assurances for the continuation of the project. So what this development agreement does is provide for the posting of assurances, and the developer has been doing a substantial amount of work at risk. But provides assurances for the completion of public infrastructure on the second half of the original first phase. And then provides for, not, I'm sorry, it's the second, what will be thirds now of the first phase. There'll be a third-third of the first phase, and then there'll be future development agreement around future, the second two phases. So we're talking about, again, in round numbers, I think, around 100 units now that will be subject to the assurance agreement and this part of the development agreement. And then there'll be ongoing discussions about the rest of the project. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I'm assuming you feel comfortable with this document that you worked so long on?
Yes, and actually, we've used land use council to help us negotiate this. And we did have to go back and recreate the research, what had happened and how we got to the point where we didn't have assurances posted for the continuation of the project. And we realized at that point that we really did need to renegotiate a new development agreement.
Okay.
So it does say that financial assurances by the city attorney, so I assume you'll still be maybe working on it a little bit, or are you pretty much done?
We have, we're close, we're very, very close. We just have a few little bits. I think it's the, the amount of notice we'll get before the assurances, before the letter of credit that will be posted. And we think this will be moot because we think the public infrastructure will be complete long before the expiration of the first period of the letter of credit. But then we're discussing the amount of notice that we would have to get in order to either release the assurances or call them.
So this development agreement then will be for the entire project regardless of who may or may not own it?
In some respects, it talks about, for example, the Hillside Development Ordinance, the applicability, what we negotiated and what's represented in this agreement, is that the Hillside Development standards will apply to the second two phases of the development, but not to the remainder of what was originally conceived of as the first phase, which is now being built in three parts, one of which is completed, the other one of which is about to be commenced. Another important piece of this is it does provide, before the commencement of the next group of homes, for the reimbursement to the city of a water line that allowed the city to take Cottonwood Ranch off the Haskell Springs well. And I think the reimbursement to the city, I think we negotiated, I think in the agreement, is about $170,000.
You okay?
Yeah.
You want a butterscotch? You want something to?
No, I'm good, thanks.
I got cinnamon too.
Okay.
They're not laced.
I don't know.
Well, if Steve's happy, I'm happy.
What was in the bottle?
Green tea.
Yeah, because it gets complicated.
It did.
And sometimes only an attorney would really.
Page after page.
Yeah. Really say, yes, that's exactly, I understand this totally.
Well, we, I am, and I believe staff is, comfortable with this agreement as a basis for moving forward.
See how the council feels. I will go ahead and move to approve the proposed development insurance agreement with Virtual Realty Enterprises LLC, subject to the approval of the final form of agreement and financial assurances by the city attorney.
Okay, so Mr. Ilinski made the motion, Mr. Garrison seconded it.
Nope, ma'am, Vice Mayor took it.
You were first? Vice Mayor was first, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And thank you for all your work on this, and I'm happy to see that they are moving forward. And that also provides jobs and provides living wages for families. So that's all good. Okay, so it's only like 10 o'clock. The claims report.
Claims and adjustments.
I brought my sleeping bag.
I'll second that.
So Mr. Ilinski moved to pay the claims and adjustments, Mr. Downing seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move to adjourn.
Okay, well, gosh, that's great. So the Vice Mayor moved to adjourn because she knew I was sleeping. And Mr. Garrison seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Oops, sorry.